Ready? Okay. Good evening, the Charter Township of Plymouth Board of Trustees. Regular meeting of, I'm sorry, uh, ba-ba-ba-ba. Special meeting of Tuesday, June 2nd, 2020 will come to order. Mr. Clerk, please take the role.
Trustee Heitman.
Here.
Trustee Dempsey.
Present.
Clerk Vorba, here. Trustee Dor Shavitz.
Here.
Trustee Kermy.
Here.
Treasurer Clinton.
Here.
Supervisor Heisey.
Here.
All present, we have a call.
Very good. Tonight's pledge of allegiance will be led by trustee Kermy.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Chuck. Item B1 is information and meeting protocol for the special meeting tonight. As you can see, we have a lot of moving parts here that we're all trying to accomplish. We have folks who can call up on our Zoom phone number. The numbers were advertised online and in our agenda and on our Facebook page. If you are watching us on TV right now, and if you're on the phone, we recommend that you turn the volume off on your TV, as there is a 30-second delay between what you're hearing on the phone and what you may be watching on TV. If you have a call, or if you have a, would like to make a comment, you have to hit star nine. That will allow us to bring you online, so you can participate in the discussion. And that will happen both on the public hearing for the sidewalks and also at the end of the meeting. Let's see, any other questions or comments, Mr. Jenks, as far as tonight's stuff? Okay.
Is there a speaker out in the lobby?
No, there is not. There is not. There is not. So what we're trying to do tonight is accomplish many different tasks. We are trying to comply with the governor's orders regarding public meetings. The governor has not changed that rule, and to mean that we cannot have, we should not have more than 10 people in this room. We should not have more than 10 people in the outer room. That's why we've provided you with cards and your cell number, so that we can call you and bring you in to speak at the point which we do the sidewalk public hearing, which will be coming up very shortly. So what we have done tonight, in order to keep our numbers low in this room, and to keep us all socially distant, we are doling out numbers, and so the gentleman here, with one exception, has been given a number because they would like to speak tonight on the sidewalk issue, which is what we are holding a public hearing on. Everyone will be limited to three minutes, and that is so that we can have an orderly and efficient meeting. And we are also attempting our best to accommodate your First Amendment rights to free speech, for petitioning the government for redress of grievances and for due process. And we are balancing those interests with the executive orders of the governor of Michigan, who has said that we cannot have more than 10 people in this room. So, we're doing the best we can under the circumstances, but we do want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to come forward and be heard, especially on the sidewalk issue. We're going to move on now to the approval of the agenda for tonight, and I would recommend that we remove item F4, which is the Golf View Park Discussion, and I would like to move that item to next week's meeting.
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Clerk.
I move for the approval of the agenda as amended, removing item four till June 9th, for Tuesday, June 2nd, 2020.
Motion is made by Clerk Vorba. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Kermy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Item D is approval of the consent agenda. Comments or questions by the board?
I have one correction under F, under the minutes.
Okay.
I think it's just a word is missing, under the last, second to the last column on page 7 of 44 of the PDF. 7 of 44. It says trustee Kermy asked that maybe a notice, or the sentence doesn't make sense. So, asked it to notice be put, be placed on the webpage to complete, because the way it's written now is it doesn't make grammatical sense.
If you would provide that for me in an email, I'll make sure it gets changed.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments? I need a motion.
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Clerk.
I move for the approval of the consent agenda for June 2nd, 2020, as changed in the minutes by trustee Kermy.
Motion is made by Clerk Vorba. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Heitman. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next up is item E, new business. This is the public hearing of necessity for the 2020 sidewalk replacement program. It is currently 7:05. I need a motion to open up the public hearing.
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Clerk.
I move for the opening of the public hearing for the sidewalk replacement program.
Motion is made by Clerk Vorba. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Dor Shavitz. Mr. Clerk, please take the role.
Trustee Heitman. Trustee Dempsey.
Yes.
Clerk Vorba, yes. Trustee Dor Shavitz.
Yes.
Trustee Kermy.
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton.
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Very good. We are going to start the public hearing by using the cards that were given out to individuals who arrived at the township hall earlier this evening. We are asking everyone to limit their comments to three minutes. Mr. Miller in the back, do you have some comment? Nope? Okay. So, who is number one? Come on down. No, he's right here. He's in the building. He's right here. And when he leaves, then the next person can come in.
Is somebody going to read their address?
Give your name and your address.
My name is Henry Harris. Address 14924 Dogwood Drive. Just have maybe a couple of comments, and then I guess I'm asking like a general question. If I ask a question, is that going to be answered?
Yes.
Okay. We'll try. So, I'm a little, I guess, maybe disappointed in the way the official notice came out, because it states many things on here, like the work has to be done by July 3rd, yet on your webpage, it says you have 60 days from the hearing. So there's a contradictory there. So is it 60 days or July 3rd? That's one thing. The ordinance, as it's written on the webpage, isn't what's on the official notice. It's wrong. Just pointing out some things that just are kind of like, you know, is it that hard to check something?
Well, tell us what's wrong. Is it with the ordinance?
It's the one-half inch instead of one inch. Item one. Ordinance says one inch. Official notice says one-half inch. So which one was the person that was walking around identifying the bricks using, or the slabs using?
This guy right up here in the corner is the expert.
Yep. So the one, the one-half inch was in a response to adding additional criteria to the sidewalk guide. That was something that happened a few years ago. We got quite a few complaints about sidewalks, and we continue to get quite a few complaints. So what we did is we ranked those sidewalk defects from one to five, and then the board actually decides which of those to replace. So the fours and fives are the only ones that are getting replaced. So in, in that criteria, a four and five is above one inch, so it is within that criteria. It says one-half inch because that's, that's where we start the defects, but we rank them up from there up to a five.
Okay, understood. I just, I don't want to lose my train of thought. I was just pointing out, it doesn't match what the ordinance states. So, one question I had, so the way I read this is the contractor could break another slab, and that's just on us. But what about our personal property? Like if you have landscaping there, is the contractor responsible for fixing that?
The, yeah, the contract does include any damage, including sprinklers to be replaced at the contractor's cost.
Okay. So do we have 30 days or 60 days?
So the intent is to replace these by July 3rd, because we're dealing with somewhat of a time crunch from constructability. We have 37,000 square feet of sidewalk. There's about 571 applicant, or 571 homes included in this program, which will take about two to two and a half months. So if we don't start in July, we won't finish until well into the wet and winter season.
Okay. And then I guess the only last question I had really quickly, hopefully, is just, when was this quoted? Because I'm trying to understand.
The bids were taken April 2nd.
April 2nd during the pandemic?
During 2020, yes.
When companies were closed?
No, they were not. We were considered, this was, any, any public infrastructure is considered an essential service as defined by the governor. So, we were very much in operation.
We were, but some, all, so many companies were?
Yes.
That's what I was, that's what I was asking. I'm just trying to like figure out, was, was the bid limited to a certain number of companies? That's all.
No, you're trying to, you're trying to say whether, you're asking whether it was competitive or not, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we received six, six bids from qualified firms, which is, you know, more than we would see on a typical sidewalk program.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Number two. Now, Mr. Miller, could you tell us who would be next to come in? He's here. He's here. So number three, who, who, so who is number four?
No, 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 don't push that, just talk. I, I, I just wanted to know, I live in Lake Point subdivision, and there's people who are thinking about going on their own, getting a private contractor to do the work. Is that allowed, or?
Yeah, I don't see why not. I mean, there, there's provisions in the sidewalk program that point out the sidewalk standards that need to be met.
Yes.
And then we're just asking that you come in and fill out a permit, a no-fee permit, just so we're aware of it, and we can take it off the list.
Okay, so, what, when it has to be done if it was a private contractor, the same dates, or?
Yeah, we're still talking about the same dates.
So July?
July 3rd, and what we're saying is the contractor won't start until after the 4th of July weekend.
Okay. Well, what I don't understand, I, I called the township to try and get an idea of which slabs need to be replaced in front of my house, and then a guy named Zach sent me back some pictures. He didn't specifically say which ones, but I can tell that there's five of them that are slightly uneven. What is the spec or requirement for levelness of the sidewalks to meet the, you know, meet the requirement of being safe or whatever it is?
Yeah, so within that public notice letter, there's a, there's a selection of criteria ranked, I think, A through E, and it talks about rise, a rise of no more than, no more than an inch. It talks about no more than two cracks within, you know, a certain thickness. It talks about tilted in excess of one inch per foot, meaning greater than, greater than 2%. And then if any five lineal feet has scaling more than 25%, so we've got a, we've got a selection of criteria from there that we rate them, one to five.
Problem is, I have a big sycamore tree in the, and that's causing the problem, so. Like I said, we've already replaced a few of them before, and now we're going to have to replace the same ones over again, so.
What is your address? Who's asking?
What's your address?
Right here. What is your address?
41215 Russet Lane.
Okay. It would be, Jeremy, is somebody, can somebody from your office check, check this, or is that? Does it need to be verified again, or no, the slabs?
The slabs are the, the slabs are the list.
Slabs.
The, the number of slabs that we put out are an estimate based on our inspection. The only, the, what will be built back to the homeowners is what exactly is replaced. So there's a handful of them that I've gone out and seen that maybe we could get away with one instead of two, and we're gonna, we're gonna make that call in the field. What we tried to do is put out notices that are, that aren't going to be short of what you're going to replace. We try to keep it within a range.
It may not be five, right? They told me five, yeah, in the letter.
Right, so it may not be five, it may be four, but we're trying to be conservative and not, you know, come in short.
Okay. All right, so they gave me the price already in the letter. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you very much. So number three. Number four. Is number four out there?
Hold it about six inches from your mouth.
Time to remove this one, talking?
No, just talk, just hold that about six inches.
You can take it off. You're, you're six feet away from everybody, and.
My name is Jack Perlmutter. I live at 41611 Greenbrier, 38 years in Lake Point.
No.
I'm here basically to ask why the communication is so short. I understand that it takes time to set things up, but I have a contractor. He's just getting back to work. He's bid the job for me. He's not going to be able to complete it by this date to come in. He's willing to do my neighbors also. I've been quoted as $1,050 for four slabs. I've only got three. I've replaced them twice over the years that I've lived there. I realize I have a tree that's nothing I can do about, or you. But the communication to us was done untimely, where we're given approximately 45 days with a national pandemic, a four to five-day national holiday, people out of work, and we're being asked to get all this done with the contractors everywhere that's backed up. The cost to me is $550 to get it repaired. That's with my contractor. $550, yes.
What's the number that we quoted you?
I put the number on the Facebook page with his company and everything. The problem is, he's willing to do it, but he can't do it in this time. We're stuck in a dilemma. The sidewalks do need to be repaired, and nobody's saying they can't, or they don't want to do them. But we're not being given enough notification to get it done. That's why I'm here today. The other thing, I got numerous, I probably got 60 people contacting me in the sub saying I have to pay for a permit. I don't know what slabs. I've got three slabs. They're telling me I have four. There's a lot of miscommunication within our subdivision on this. And the one big thing, the biggest complaint I hear from the residents is, why isn't there an X on the sidewalk? I understand technology, and you can read my license plate from the moon, but I can't tell what sidewalk needs to be replaced if I'm standing on it. That should be corrected.
Okay, well, that's all been done with the GIS system. We gave everybody a, an email and a phone number to contact our township engineers at Spalding De Decker Associates. They received over 160 different phone calls and emails. I, I guess my, my request would be, if, if people are calling you, you need to go back to your letter and refer them back to the engineers. The engineers can, can email people the exact coordinates of the slabs that need to be replaced.
Well, I believe they're calling me because I said I found a contractor, and right away, people are saying, oh heck, I'd like to use a contractor myself.
Well.
But the time, listen, I can't get it done in that amount of time.
Well, your contractor can't get it done, but it's.
Well, correct, yes.
Now, we, we bid this out.
But I wasn't given any time to, to locate a contractor, 45 days. It just so happened, the guy came to my house on the same day I got the letter.
People have, I mean, but the, the contractors have been operational, construction has been operational in the state for several weeks, and then you also had, these guys were still working remotely as well for, for bid purposes.
And they've been backed up and behind schedule on jobs that they were going to complete, jobs they promised to do next. I understand that. I think we all understand how contractors are.
So what is, what is your ask of the board, to have more time?
My belief is we should have been given a reasonable amount of time to consider getting a contractor in. I'm talking $500 difference. Of course, one minus slab, I'm sure they knock out $250. But, communication with the subdivision would have been great. You know, things, things just don't operate smoothly when you're set with a time limit like this.
But we are required by statute and by ordinance to, to convey these information to you in the, the time prescribed. It, it's not, it's not a matter of having a discussion with the HOA or a town hall meeting or something. It's got to be done, it's got to be done by a procedure that we have followed consistently over the years. We're trying to implement a sidewalk program again, because we get sued regularly by people who trip and fall. Even though the legislature has provided us some relief, it's, it still doesn't stop the lawsuits.
I understand that, but we deserve to be told in advance and have the opportunity to repair it ourselves. I really believe that. And I don't think that that's been done here. I know you guys do an awful lot, but in this here, the communication, somebody dropped the ball a little bit.
So what date would you like?
I haven't had time to sit here and think what date. I'd like to have a date where I could say, give me two months to look for a contractor and get it done. I'm, you know, this 45 days, we just need more time. People are out of work.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see.
Well, that's true. I found that out tonight.
Yeah.
The calls I got, didn't say that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Who's next? We can bring in the next two people. It doesn't work if you don't hold it close to your mouth, so. We won't be, the people won't be able to hear you.
I don't care. They can, they're going to come in and ask their own questions anyhow, so.
Okay.
We just need to hear, though, so speak loud.
I am. 4211 Full Brentwood is where I'm at.
Brentwood.
My problem is, I'm going to guess, because it's a tree on the curbside. But it's been that way for, ever since I lived. It's gotten worse. It's cost me a lot of money too. Of course, it's Wayne County's tree, curbside is theirs, but it's my problem. So first, it was the roads, which is Wayne County. They don't have any money. They can't take care of it. Tree, my problem too, they don't have any money. So why do we keep sending them tax money if they can't take care of nothing? Is my question.
Okay, it's.
So plus the timeframe too.
That's a policy question. You should call your county commissioner, so.
That's still a legitimate question.
Oh, no, it is. It's just that we can't, we can't control it.
I understand.
So what, so what's your sidewalk-related question?
Because it's their problem. It's their tree that screwed up the sidewalk.
Yep.
So plus the marking. I was told by somebody else that had called that they were going to come out and mark the sidewalk.
No.
You know, in the old days, it was X's and O's. The homeowner and then the township, or the city. So the township isn't paying for any sidewalks anymore? It's all the homeowner?
It's always been that way. In fact, it's.
Well, what was an X and O for?
Well, the one exception was if it, if there was a gate valve, or a fire hydrant, or something that was in the middle of the slab, the township paid, and we still do that.
Under, under.
But it is the timeframe too. That is ridiculous. We only got this letter two weeks ago.
But that's within the, that's within the statutory guideline.
Say, you got 30 days to fix it.
Yeah.
If you don't have the money to pay for it, we'll pay for it, but.
Yeah.
And then we'll put it on your taxes.
Yeah.
You're going to charge the interest, right?
No.
No? Zero interest?
Well, no, wait a minute.
Now, that's a good thing.
Any interest on, what's, hold on, hold on.
We gotta.
Prime rate plus.
We, we gotta talk about. Kevin and I were talking before the meeting. We gotta perhaps revisit the language about the payment.
Okay, but it's five years, right?
Well, not the way it's written right now, so.
Okay, but we can decide that.
We can decide that.
Yeah, okay.
So an $800 job's going to cost me what, over five years? Thousand? Fifteen hundred?
Well, what's the prime rate right now? Zero?
For now, but that changes every year, right?
No, we would lock it in.
No, they lock, so.
So, okay.
So basically, we have no choice. In other words, this is getting done, no matter what. Because those areas I mind that can be ground and save money, that concrete's been there for 50 years. The stuff that's going to go in is going to be garbage.
Okay, well.
We know that.
Yeah.
And the root, the two blocks can be lifted up, take the root, drop them back down, you're done.
We can certainly, no, we can certainly look at that. We have other.
If I was a young man, I would do it, but I'm not. The slabs are perfect. There's no gap.
No, and we're not saying that's not going to happen. If you have, if you have sidewalks that are not cracked, and if they've simply been upended like that by a root, we can, we can hack out the root and just lower the sidewalk.
I would love that. It would save me a lot of money.
But that's, that will be determined on-site.
You know, it's only up this much. There's nothing wrong with it.
That's the, the provision in the contract is actually.
Should I call and have them come out and look and talk to me about what they're, they're doing? Is that what I should do?
What do you recommend, Jeremy?
Yeah, so the, the provision in the contract right now is when those two flags get removed, those roots get removed six inches below grade. So they're already planning on removing those roots below grade.
Right, but I'm saying, you know what I'm saying, the kind of, the slabs are perfect. And they're forever. No cracks, nothing.
Okay, good.
So lift, cut it, drop them back down, so it's possible.
Yeah.
You're showing $800, so I'm assuming that's three slabs, right?
Then you may be, you may be okay then.
Do I need to call and have somebody come out and talk to me and show me? Is that what I should do?
Sure.
Sure, or send us an email. It's all on that letter, the notice letter. Yeah, okay.
Well, I personally made quite a few, you know, site visits and gone through that and marked off, you know, anything that we think that we can remove and work with the homeowners to make sure they know what we're replacing.
I don't know where I stand. I'm looking at $800, so I don't know if we're going to do that. We're going to lift and cut, or we're not.
We gotta go out there and assess it, so we'll see what happens. Yeah.
So he says he's already done it.
Well, but we're going to remove the roots and lower the slabs.
Okay. So if they come out with a jackhammer, I can stop them.
I would, I would stop them and.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, stop.
They might have ended up over there.
Ah, no.
Thank you, I agree.
Thanks, buddy. Okay. What number is next?
Hold that mic, hold that mic about six inches from your mouth.
Hello, my name is Paula Vance, and I live 15224 Maxwell. And I had a couple of questions, and you may have already answered them, but we really can't hear really well out there. One is, I, I don't know which blocks, you know, are, need to be replaced, and I don't really understand what the methodology was. If you had people walking by, why didn't you mark the blocks? And if you've already answered, I'm sorry, but I don't know what you said.
Okay.
Jeremy, real quick, can you answer that?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, just in general, we got quite a few complaints about the X's and O's on sidewalks. So what we decided, what the township decided was to go to a more digital format, which is basically we use Art Collector, which is a tablet. We go out there, shoot a picture of it. It puts a geo-location to it, punches it into GIS. And then from there, what we've been asking is if you have a question about where your sidewalk is located, send an email to that email or the phone, phone number, and we've been emailing out GIS locations and pictures of exactly where the sidewalk.
Is there a charge for that?
No.
Okay.
No.
I don't, maybe you could make a count of how many complaints you got about the X's and O's, and how many complaints about not marking it. Just FYI, doesn't make any sense. Also, I heard, and maybe you've already answered this too, there's a lot of walks that are, like, slanted up and that, and in fact, there's one really bad one on Farm Brook, just south of Green, Greenbrier, really bad. And it's probably because of the trees there, and I don't know if that's going to be replaced, but I heard, I, somebody said that you guys are okay with the slopes, but I think sidewalks should be flat.
Well, if you could, you have the email for the engineers. If you could email them your, the approximate address of that, then we can, we can take a look at it. It may, it may have already been flagged.
All right, and then, I guess that's really all I had to say.
Okay.
I, I walk our neighborhood quite a bit, and I want the sidewalks to be level, you know, for safety reasons, but it just seems like it would have been good to mark them. That's my feeling.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mar, Susan?
Hold it about six inches from your mouth.
I'm not comfortable holding it. Do you have a glove?
No.
Just stand next to it then.
Okay. My name's Susan Watson. I live at 42005 Michael Drive. So, a couple of things. I understand 10 people allowed in here, just a couple of social distancing things, and that you said that we should be socially distanced down there.
Yes.
But there's no one controlling that or guiding us, and I was very, very uncomfortable with everyone standing there.
We told them they could stand outside.
No, but 10 feet, 10, six feet apart, and there should be some, I realize we're all new at this. Mr. Vorba, just let me talk. I realize we're all new at this. Let's do better. That's not better.
We have chairs outside. We have place marks outside.
Somebody needs to guide us, and that's not.
Well, we're all adults out there, I, you know.
Mr. Heisey, we're all new at this. This is an our facility. Please help us.
Call the governor.
I will.
You should.
So are you Susan Watson?
Yes.
Okay, got it. I'm on the list.
I don't appreciate your tone.
Okay.
42005 Michael.
Correct. I'm not opposed to these repairs, but the sample letter that exists on the website says that there would be X's and O's. So that's incorrect data. I, I have concerns with the communication.
You said the letter said X's and O's?
The sample letter on your website says that there would be X's and O's placed on the sidewalks.
There will be markings, and what we're asking is that if you're going to have your own contractor, you're going to do it yourself. You pull a no-permit fee, or a no-fee permit from the building department, and then we'll go out there and physically mark them for you, so your contractor knows, or you know which ones to replace. No, that's something we need to add into future letters, so I understand that that's an issue, and we did see that in our responses in email and our responses in the phone calls. Same with the, actually, the sidewalk location question. That's something we'll add into next year's letter about you can call or email for these additional location information that is available.
So I don't know if my options, I would like to get estimates on my four slabs, I believe I have. I want to know what my options are. Grinding, leveling, and replacing, are those all my options?
So we, we aren't, the Township Sidewalk Guide doesn't recognize grinding, mainly because of the ADA concerns, the opening up of the pores of the concrete, and then the eventual deterioration of that concrete, but they are recognizing mudjacking, which is lifting up the sidewalk.
Okay. Again, with the communication, my letter. Um, again, with the communication, my letter says to call somebody at a 248 number. I live in 734, I've been in Plymouth twenty-five years. To me, this was a scam right from the get-go during this national crisis. I didn't believe this for a second. And I'm not an elderly person, and, and I think that's very confusing, and I believe you called me too, and that was a 517 number, again. That, the communication should've been in here that a contracting company from outside our area zone would be calling us. Or that's who we were trying to contact. That's just a simple communication clarification.
Yeah, what did you mean by that?
Right here, it says the sidewalk hotline number is a 248 number.
It's Spalding Decker's number, Bob.
It's misleading.
It's Spalding Decker's number, it's our township engineer.
It should've said that was the engineering company, so we knew. Um, I'm, I also was inquiring that, or wondering about, um, prior to this letter, was there information given that the township was going to be doing this?
Well, no, there was no formal notice anywhere.
Well, it's been our goal to have, to reinvigorate the sidewalk replacement program, and so the sidewalk, the township is divided into, I think, four or five zones.
Five.
And five zones, so the goal is to hit a different zone every year, so that every five years sidewalks are gonna be reinspected and replaced, uh, for public safety.
Prior to this communication, when would I have heard about this, and where?
Uh, we would've- We would've had discussions at board meetings.
Okay, and where can I find information on it, on your website?
You should be able to go to the board meeting, because we had bids before, they were too high. So we had official bids last year for this, and they were too high, so we went out for more bids, more bids. So we've been talking about this for over a year.
Okay, so you need to get the word out. I can't come up with a thousand dollars, I'm a single mom, and I'm scared for my employment right now. And I, I just can't show up with a thousand dollars and, and a, a two-month notice, so, again, if you would've told me a year ago to plan for an assessment, I could've done that. Um, what are gonna be, what are my payment options?
We're, I don't know, Kevin, if you've found anything of substance.
Are you, are, do you push the green?
I, I can't hear.
Button green.
Both the ordinances and the statute provide for a five-year assessment period.
Is, is that in this letter?
I haven't seen the letter.
No, so what, what we've been, uh, communicating to those who have been asking about that is, is once this public notice happens and this, this public hearing, uh, finding a necessity happens, another letter will be coming out from the treasurer's office explaining the payment options. So right now, we're talking about, you know, the finding a necessity, why we need to do these sidewalks.
So it's just part of a process. This is a legal process that we have to do, then we send out information, say, here are your options.
Okay, but I should know my options before I, I can plan. I should know, I should know how I can pay for this before-
I understand, but, but what we're doing is following a legal process set by, by the legislature.
Sure. Again, and my last thing is just that this isn't the time to be assessing people, it's too stressful, it's too difficult, it's, we're in a financial crisis.
So the payment options, we still have to discuss that yet?
Well-
We can set certain things.
We approve them sometime this year.
I, I probably, I probably screwed this up, because when we had decided on the, uh, when we had decided, uh, on the options for the SADs, remember when we talked about five years would be prime plus two, ten years would be prime? I asked Jeremy to insert that language into the resolution. But in a, in a later discussion with Kevin, this is different than an SAD, and we already have ordinances and already have precedent that says it's payable over five years. So part of the discussion after this is going to be my recommendation that we change that language to say payable over five years.
At, at prime plus two, or at statute?
It, it mentions nothing about interest, so my assumption, my interpretation would be no interest.
So Mark, when you collected all of those sidewalk repair bills, when you first came to office in 2016 and 17, there was no interest attached to those?
Correct.
All right.
Could I ask-
That was the last time we did this, was 2016.
Correct.
Could I ask our attorney then to quote the specific statutory language about the five-year timeframe?
MCL 41.288A subsection 3 reads as follows. If the board determines that the construction, repair, or maintenance of sidewalks is necessary, it may construct, repair, or maintain the sidewalks, and assess the cost of the property involved payable over a five-year period, or permit the owners of the property involved to have the sidewalks constructed, repaired, or maintained according to township specifications at their own expenses. Sidewalks constructed, repaired, or maintained under this, under this section, on the right-of-way of state highways or county roads must have the approval of the state or county highway authority having jurisdiction over the highway or road.
All right, I'm done, except for I'd like everyone's business card if I could, so I know how to get in touch with you, and, Mr. Heisey, I hope you stay off your phone and listen to your citizens for the rest of this, because this is important. And, um-
Is that me?
I'm wondering where I, where we can, uh-
It is me, Jack. Sometimes it gets mixed up.
Who am I gonna call for clarification on my slabs?
Uh, me.
Okay, and I'll get your number?
Okay, uh, who's next?
Hi, can you guys hear me okay? I'm new at this, so I'm really sorry, as you can tell.
Speak really loud.
Are you? Okay, um, so I, like I said, I'm new at this, but I'm also newly unemployed because of, you know, uh, COVID and, and everything else, but, um, I, I guess my question's more for your attorney. What is your name, sir?
Well, let's- Kevin Bennett. So let, let's have the questions come through us, okay?
Okay, okay, cool. Well, I, I, I'm sure that everybody here knows the ordinances on the sidewalks, and this is really my question. Um, if, and I've read the ordinances, trust me, I, I've stayed up many nights. Uh, by the way, we were the second highest assessment on your sheet.
What's your address?
14934 Maplewood. And Mr. Heisey knows this address. You were invited out to my home a few weeks ago, and you actually said LOL, LOL, grow up.
What was that?
Sorry, you did. You were invited out, Mr. Stewart's our neighbor, he invited you out to our home. We had contractors out that said there was no problem. Your response was LOL, LOL, grow up. Not fair to us. We are citizens, and I'm pretty sure I voted for you, so anyway.
Because you're talking of Jon Stewart?
I saw the text messages, but-
So you saw text messages that I allegedly sent to Jon Stewart?
Yes.
Okay.
So, where I'm gonna go, what, what I wanted to say to the attorney is that I know everybody here knows the ordinances. I don't need to go over that. I heard many, many smart people say exactly what they were, and not they are what they are. But I wanna talk about 11 dash 6 de, uh, period O7, which says, "Any person from a corporation who violates this ordinance or fails to comply with its requirements shall be deemed guilty of a misdemeanor." If you pass this based on the letter you sent us, you're not in compliance. And I'm looking at you, Mr. Heisey. You're not in compliance if this passes. This is, and I don't know how you change an ordinance based on a letter. But this is what, this is what it is, and this is, I think, why so many people are confused.
I don't know why, where, you got that ordinance off of the website, or where'd you get that? Did you get that from?
From the township website.
Okay. Jeremy, do you have any comments on that?
No, 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 well, you, you're just, you're the contractor, correct?
No, he's the township engineer. It's a significant function.
Oh, and, and let me say, we talked to Zach. Zach also said that, um, you guys didn't use any, um, geographical software, GIS?
Said it was inspected in person.
In person, and also, you also said that it was done electronically, and your own engineer, Zach, said that somebody physically came out. So which is it? I'm, I am, I'm genuinely interested, because we do, we don't like being stupid.
Jeremy, go ahead.
Both. Someone in person came out and inspected it with-
So why would he deny to us on the phone that anything electronic was used? I'm, it's your employee, it's not me. I'm just asking the questions, and I paid the taxes.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'm just, I'm being, I'm just asking for fairness.
I, I can't speak to exactly what, uh, you talked to or what the context was that you spoke with Zach about, but what I can tell you is that someone does come out physically to inspect the sidewalk.
Does that happen yet?
Yes, and with, with that inspection, they bring a tablet with them, and that tablet has dropdowns for each of the five, um, criteria, and they rate it based on whether or not it's, you know, greater than an inch, less than an inch, greater than a half inch, et cetera, how much scaling there is, and those coordinates, along with that picture, get pushed back into GIS, so it is both, it's electronic and in person. You have to be there in person to rate it, but the data is stored electronically rather than marking an X or an O.
And, and I'm, I'm probably a little ill-prepared, I should've brought letters. We had a contractor physically out, a large one, that physically came out, and he's got no reason to lie, by the way, I'm sure he probably has put in bids with you guys. So this is what I'm saying, this is an unbiased third party, right? He said, "I can't find anything, not one slab wrong with your sidewalk. You guys, you guys said we owe, or we have to replace 225 feet." He said, "I wouldn't even replace one." Now, we're willing to do our part. We have two special needs kids, okay? Mobility issues, okay? If there was an issue with the sidewalk, I would've been the first one to say, without a letter, by the way, "Let's just fix it. Let's get it done. We're good citizens, we care, and we care very much, we're passionate." Listen, we could've moved anywhere. We live in Plymouth Township, and we live here for a reason. We do, and we, and we love it here, but there's nothing, literally, in our situation, I can't speak for everybody here, there's nothing wrong with our sidewalk, there is something very wrong with your timing, and there's something a little wrong with the etiquette on this. Also, it's just not, it's, it's just not, this is not equal. I understand, replace the sidewalks, absolutely, like I said. I think you guys are doing great work here, with the exception of your timing, the fact, the methods that you've used for data collection, the lack of marking. People don't come here because they like to give you guys a hard time. I know I don't want to. I'd rather be sitting out back, sat, back, you know, in the backyard having a barbecue, but we're just, we're very frustrated.
So let's do this, let's, let's work for a solution here. Why don't you guys, why don't you guys at Spalding contact her? Send your guys out and take a, take a fresh look at it, okay?
We were, we asked for that, and what, what we were told was to pull a permit, but we couldn't get a permit for anybody out till after July 3rd. This is from the engineers.
You need a permit if you are going to replace the slabs on your own.
Well, like, as I told you, we are totally willing, if it's necessary, however-
No, we're on the same page. I'm just saying that what you should do is let's, you, you got, you know, you got Jeremy's email, and you got Jeremy's phone number.
Do we?
That's the email.
We don't, we have Zach. We have Zach. That's all we have.
Well, I don't know who Zach is, so I know who Jeremy is.
Well, he works for you.
Well, Jeremy works for me, so let's-
Do you know who Zach is?
I do.
Oh, thank God.
Let's talk to Jeremy, and let's, uh, let's have, let's have somebody go back out there and take a look at it.
You guys can't pass this, you know that, right? You know the letter doesn't match with the, with the, with your own ordinances. You guys know that, right?
Well, that's, you, you've, you've made your point, and we appreciate that.
Thank you. I do appreciate your time, guys, so much.
Okay, thank you. All right, who's next?
Just so, just so we have it.
Oh, absolutely, because I didn't catch your contact info.
I'm Katie. 14934.
Give me a call or an email, and I'll come out and look at them, and we can mark them up, you know, if you want.
Great, thank you, sir.
Uh, my name is Nick Baze, and I live at 15194 Amber Court. Um, I've, I echo many of the concerns that everybody else had. I, I noticed there was a conflict between the document that we received and the ordinance, and when I reviewed the property, the sidewalks on my property, I had a hard time finding any that were grossly in violation of either of the two guidelines. Uh, I emailed the sidewalks@plemethouship.org, uh, on May 21st, and I did not receive a response. I would like to know which ones are damaged, because I, I think there may have been a mistake. I really don't see it.
I'm sorry, what was your address again?
It's, uh, 15194, and I'm Mr. Baze, I'm the last one there, yeah.
Amber Court?
Amber Court, yeah.
That little court, the court off of Hagerty.
Mr. Dorser, I want to thank you personally. You, you came to my house once, and I had some construction debris dumped in my backyard.
Yeah, I remember that.
I mentioned it to you, and it was removed within about a week.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
That was, uh, like, 2016 or something, that's what I thought I recognized.
Uh, I won't forget that, thank you. Um, but I would like to know, I would like to have my flags marked, so I can see myself if it can be, if it can be taken.
And, and again, this is a short-term answer, though, but if you email that, you email that again, Jeremy will email you the exact GIS-
Perfect, that's what I'm looking for.
Photos and everything, with, with the analysis that was done. If, if need be, somebody can come back out and take a look, but we can get you that information.
Sure.
We apologize if you did not get that information before, you should have, uh, it would've saved you a trip, so.
It would've, and that, that's why I'm here, because I did not, I, I wasn't responded to, and I wanted to see, I don't know if, I can tell some people have been responded to, and it sounds like maybe some others haven't. But I'd like to know which, uh, which squares need to be-
Sure.
Replaced. Uh, unrelated to the sidewalks, I'd also like to ask if you can get a portable speaker in the lobby, because I think you're gonna get-
Exactly, um, hopefully, we won't have to do these kind of things for much longer, so.
And the, the last thing is, when I read the article, uh, or not the article, but the ordinance about sidewalk replacement, uh, my reading was that the, the Board of Trustees, um, may institute a sidewalk repair, uh, program. And that word "may" means a lot to me when I compare it to the word "shall." Uh, it doesn't say "shall," it says "may," and I think that gives this board the flexibility to maybe slow down on the timeframe that, uh, you're requiring. I, I, we've heard a few complaints about having contractors say this is too short of a timeframe, and if you're not required by the ordinance to do this, I think you may have the power to postpone this and give everybody a little bit more time. Uh, especially, as everybody, everybody else has mentioned, we are in the midst of a worldwide pandemic, unemployment's high. Uh, we've, we've got a lot of challenges we face right now, and, uh, I'd like to ask you to consider postponing this, uh, as, as far as, uh, is feasible.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What if we postponed it till next year? What would you think of that?
Well, I don't want to speak for the whole community, but that would mean a lot to me, because I know that I could get a contractor within a year. I think I will have a very hard time getting a contractor to fix my slabs within maybe forty-five days, uh, especially since I, I don't know yet which ones need to be replaced. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm surprised that, uh, at least the prior gentlemen said they were able to get a contractor for less than we're paying. That really surprises me.
Yeah. Right.
Okay.
Well, and I, like I said, we got six qualified contractors, so.
Yeah, I mean, we did everything by the book, so. Thank you very much, that was a great, good comments. Next?
Thank you.
My name is Karen Avery. I live at 41162 Greenbrook. I agree with most, if not all, of the previous comments, and I disagree with a lot of the statements that have been heard particularly by you, Mr. Heisey, and I'll explain those in just a minute. Uh, one, I think the manner in which the notices were provided was just awful. Uh, to send us a letter and give us less than two weeks' notice of this meeting, as well as the fact that we need our sidewalks replaced, and then to give us less than thirty days' notice to have the sidewalks replaced at a time when we have the pandemic, contractors are woefully behind schedule, is just unreal when this is not an emergency. The fact that the sidewalk might be an inch over is not an emergency, and I understand the litigation standpoint, but that doesn't prevent anyone from actually filing a lawsuit. It may prevent them from succeeding, but it doesn't prevent them filing one. Uh, second, and, and with all due respect to you, the fact that you need more time to actually get them completed shouldn't take away from our time to, to repair it ourselves. As to the lack of notice, I still don't know, I've been told I need five, uh, squares replaced. The day I got my notice, which was, uh, sometime in May, uh, actually, May 19th is when I received the notice, I emailed the address to find out which, which, which particular squares need to be replaced. On May 26th, because of course I can't get them replaced until I know which ones they are. So May 26th, I get a notice, or I get a response. What did they send me? They sent me a picture of my sidewalk. The entire sidewalk, not the five slabs. They didn't mark out which five slabs, they didn't give me a GPS coordinate or anything like that. They sent me a picture of my sidewalk.
Did it come from Zach?
No, it, it, it came from our office, and it specifically said, "The sidewalk sections in question, photos are attached. There appears to be a major crack in one or more of the sections, and some heave and settlement on the other section." It's two different pictures, um-
But there's more than five slabs in that picture, so which five? So I sent a, a, a response, and I said- and I said, "There are more than five slabs in this picture. Can you identify which ones?" I've so far gotten no response. So, that cuts out my 30-day window to get them replaced, because right now, I still don't know which slabs they are. So, I actually would fully support adjourning this or postponing it a year, so that we actually have time to find out which slabs. I really liked it when you marked the slabs, because then I knew which ones I needed to be done. Even if I didn't get the notice right away, I at least knew which ones they were. The other reason I liked having them marked is then I can see what my neighbors, what you've done with my neighbors, because that's another point that I have, is that I have seen, I've walked the sub, and I have seen other people that I would have thought, "Oh, they must have gotten 100 square feet or whatever. Oh, no, they've got maybe 25 square feet." So, I think, to me, it is arbitrary, the way this has been done. That house that's on Farm Brook that she was talking about has two slabs that have been marked, or two slabs, I don't know which one. But I can tell you, her sidewalk is far worse than mine. So, when I look at hers, which, and she's on a corner, and she has the same sloping that mine does, and none of them are marked other than two, I think, "Why are mine marked five, and she has only two?" And I'm not pinpointing her specifically, but it's a, having them marked gives other people the notice to know whether you're applying the rules in a fair and balanced way. So, and the other thing I would point out is not marking them and not indicating on your notice, all you do is list square footage, to me violates Article 6, Section 6.03(c) of Public Act 80 of 1989, which requires you to identify the particular slab. And identifying square footage is not identifying the slab. It's like saying, "Oh, I'm gonna replace five miles of 275." Well, that doesn't tell you anything. And... My last point would be, five years ago and 10 years ago, I'm not sure exactly which, we had some slabs replaced by the township because of tree roots. I don't know whether some of those same slabs are marked, because of course I don't know which slabs are marked. And I want to know if they are some of the same ones, and they were done by the township, and I paid for it, why do I have to pay for it again? It should last more than five years or 10 years, and that's a question that I have, is why do I have to pay for it again? They obviously didn't do it properly to begin with, and my husband was telling me that when they did do some of the new sidewalks, five or 10 years ago, they angled them so that they would match the other sidewalks, the other ones that weren't replaced, so that they would all be even. If you're asking me to now replace all of them because they're on an angle, when you put them, the new ones, on an angle, that doesn't seem right, if I'm making sense. Follow what I'm saying?
Jeremy, is that one that you'd like to have your people check out again?
Sure, yeah, we're more than willing to come out and look at them and physically, you know, either mark them out, or at least point out to you which ones need to be replaced. I've done that on a number of occasions.
Which I would appreciate, but again, and that solves one problem, but it doesn't solve my ability to get it fixed, because it could be that some of mine only need to be leveled, not actually replaced. And I don't know what the contractor's planning to do, but in my view, most contractors would prefer to replace it than they would to even it out, because it gives them more money. And they may do it when I'm not home. How am I gonna know what they're planning to do? If I contract with somebody, then I know what they're gonna do. But that's another, I mean, it's a concern that I have. I don't know why you've listed them, so. Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening. I'll keep it pithy. I have no cracks. I have no gaps. I have no pitches. I have no ditches. I have no spalling. I don't know why you want to replace $788 worth of concrete.
What's your address?
41, I'm sorry. Paul Dankhouse, 41441 Greenbrier.
Didn't recognize your hat. That sinister hat on your head. I do that just to harass Bob to shout.
I gotta ruffle some frizzers, I guess. Yeah, there...
It's Greenbrook, but wait, I'm sorry, go slow.
Yeah, I looked at my sidewalk after I got the letter, and I'm like...
Paul, and I'm not, believe me, I'm not argumentative, but I've walked your neighborhood many times. I mean, you've got some really bad sidewalks in that area.
Well, I moved.
Oh, you moved?
Yeah, I just moved from Lakeland.
Where'd you move?
I'm getting two sidewalks. I moved to Greenbrier, Lake Point, from Plymouth Gardens. I have a couple slabs in Plymouth Gardens that are cracked and that need repair, and I'm good with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but on Lake Point, my house on Lake Point, there's nothing wrong with my sidewalk. I mean, and after reading the parameters of what, not even close. I mean, not even like, I'm not pushing it.
Well, again, I think that's one where Jeremy's people can go out and do a recheck. You know, we had a, do you want to just explain the 1 through 5 thing really quick?
Yeah, yeah, just in general, we walk the sections. There's five sections within the township. We inspected the entire section, and from that, about 1,600 sidewalk defects came out. From that, they're rated based on a 1 to 5, meaning a defect could be you have cracks in your sidewalk, but maybe the gap isn't wide enough, maybe the tilt isn't enough, maybe it's ponding water, but not in a large way, maybe there's a lip, but it's not greater than an inch. So, we rank them so that everyone knows when we get complaints that, yes, we did rank it, it doesn't fall within the criteria of the sidewalk replacement program. Anything beyond those 4 and 5 threshold is what we call out for replacement.
So, the process was...
Yeah, I don't meet any of those criteria.
So, what he's saying, so everyone understands, the ranking is 1 to 5, and we told them to only go to the worst ones, fours and fives. Only identify that. Don't bother the threes, twos, or ones. That was our instructions to the engineer.
Yeah, not even close.
Yeah, I'm happy to...
Come on, take a look at it, because, yeah, there's nothing wrong with that sidewalk.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. If you, I can take down your information and...
You got his phone number and every, it's in your letter. It's that 248 number.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
Okay, man. Thanks. Okay, next. I think it's Cheryl. And then Glenn, you can bring in your next, our next person.
Well, I guess I wasn't prepared for this, because I thought this was gonna be more of an informational meeting, but I guess I've learned quite a bit. But my big concern was, I even took pictures, is which, you know, pieces of sidewalk are in violation. And this house was just purchased in January, so, you know, it needs a lot of fixing up. A month to fix it isn't quite enough.
What's your address again?
11220...
Which street?
It was up there, Hagerty. It's just up there. We pulled permits. It needed major...
11220 Hagerty?
Yeah.
Sueda?
Yeah.
All right.
Hi.
She's wearing a mask. We can't recognize her.
No, we can't. I can't recognize anyone.
75 square feet.
Yes. But, as I said, the house was just purchased in January, then it was, became pandemic world. Permits were pulled for electrical, new AC furnace, et cetera. Oh, sorry, hand tucker. So, you know, it's like, it's my son's house, first-time home buyer. That's quite a chunk of change. So, am I correct in understanding there would be a five-year period to pay? Because that was one of my questions.
Yes.
Five years to pay it?
As far as I'm concerned, I don't know the board's gonna agree on, but...
Okay.
That's traditionally how we've done it.
My issue with not knowing which slabs needed to be repaired...
Sure.
Because my husband's pretty handy, and my son is strong. I mean, we wouldn't know if we were gonna repair them or not.
Well, that's another one, I think, for Jeremy's people to look at.
It's just across the street up there.
Yeah, and what we were asking is just contact us via that email and ask exactly that. We got 164 responses, and I'd say the vast majority of them were about the sidewalk location, so we did talk about that. We're gonna add in some additional language to next year's letter about making sure we let you know how to get that information.
Okay.
And then if you want them physically located, where we go out and physically paint them, then we're just asking that you pull the no-fee permits. We can kind of keep it orderly and make sure we know which ones we're going out to mark.
Okay, very good. And then the, I'm assuming that the 1051 per square foot for repair is reasonable, and, you know...
Well, we bid that out. It was a competitive bid. Six vendors bid for it, and we got the lowest-most responsible bid.
Yeah, I think it was roughly 2/3 of what it was the previous year that we bid it, so it was significantly less...
And then, some of the pitch in the sidewalk, I mean, it's not a tripping hazard, but it does kind of rise and lower. So, is that, would that be the issue, a 4 or a 5?
It is, yeah. That's a criteria that's listed in that public notice. There's an A through E, and there's a no more than one inch rise.
Okay.
So...
Well, part of that rise is there are some large trees on the property, and we've tried to get some quotes on that, too, to remove the trees. So, this one particular tree, or maybe a couple of them, are between the sidewalk and the street. So, is that my tree?
It's technically Wayne County's tree, but they don't, they're not gonna take care of it for you unless we complain a lot. But our goal is not to take down trees. Our goal is to work around and cut the roots and eliminate as much of the tree that's impacting the sidewalks. We're not trying to build sidewalks for the fun of it. If we can save the sidewalk through, by lowering the roots, by cutting the roots, by mudjacking...
You can't see my face going...
We'll do that, huh?
My face is going, mm.
Oh, okay. So, but no, what we want to do is work around the tree. We're not gonna, we can't take trees down. Those are still the counties, and we also, as a policy, we don't want to be knocking trees down if we don't have to.
Yeah, well, this is quite the root monster, and so...
I know which one you're talking about.
Do ya?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure, yeah.
Firwood?
Firwood.
Corner of Hagerty and Firwood?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, that would be my question, is like, how would they even...
For an onsite inspection, but we know that there's a lot of trees in your neighborhood, and throughout this entire zone here, where it's tree roots that have been the historic problem. And again, we're not out to fix slab, replace slabs for the fun of it, or just, you know, we're not trying to make money off of anybody. Gosh, no.
But I'm also just considering, it's like, I don't know how those slabs could even be replaced without the tree being removed.
Well, we gotta take a look at it. Hopefully, that won't be the case. If it is, then we're gonna have to coordinate that with Wayne County.
Okay. All right, I guess that's it. Yeah, a little more timeframe rather than a month, and which ones we need to do.
Okay.
All right, thanks. See ya.
You are smiling under there now, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next. And then who's next?
Did I pick up the wrong side? Okay, I'll make this really short and sweet. I think everybody feels we're under a lot of pressure here with all the pandemic and everything else going on. A lot of us don't understand where or how you got where you are with the sidewalks. I look at mine, and I really can't see where it's lifted enough to cost $525. I live at 14402 Robinwood Drive.
14402 Robinwood?
Yes. There's two little cracks across, two, yeah.
Yep.
Yes. And the other is barely lifted, where if I was walking, I haven't ever tripped over it. So, can someone come back and remark or mark them so that we actually know what it is without a cost to us?
I can send you the pictures and the GIS locations immediately. Just send an email to that Plymouth, you know, at Sidewalk.
Okay, I'd have to get an email address from you.
Okay.
It's sidewalks, I mean, it's sidewalks, one word, @plummettwp.org, just like our emails. It should be, it's in that letter, though, that you got.
Okay. I agree with a lot of people that say we can't afford it right now, and people are very limited their resources and how they're feeling about what's going on with everything. Our government, I mean, our governor is not helping with everything, and I think we're all in trouble. So, I think everybody is really worried about what's coming. So...
And that's why, that's the purpose of the public hearing, is we have to hear from you. It's part of the statute that says we have to have this meeting so that you can come forward and talk to us.
I agree. And like I say, I'm not gonna take forever like some of the other people did, so I appreciate you listening to me.
And I do have those pictures, and I know one of them was a lip, and the other one was some crack and ponding, so I'll be able to send those to you easily.
Now, can they just be bonded across?
It's, so in the location of one of these, there's a pretty big lip on the one side. It's greater than one inch. I've got the, I'll send you the pictures.
Okay.
You'll be able to see it.
Because we looked at it, and nobody could figure out that.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks. Next. Hold on. Thank you, Mike. Yeah, you can take it off if you want. You can take it off if you want. He has a booming voice?
You can scroll down to the $5,000 bill there for me. 42, yeah, 426815M.
Yeah, that's the one I asked about when I came in.
Uh, 5M. My question is, the property between the sidewalk and the street is an easement, correct?
Yes.
Okay. That's Wayne County's property, correct?
Yes.
Okay. If you pull it up on Google Maps...
Your easements there, though, are pretty darn big, if I'm not mistaken, and I don't know, I'm not gonna say for sure where your easement ends and Wayne County's easement begins.
Okay.
Are you tied Morocco?
Correct.
All right.
And I'm not saying that to be argumentative. I just, I know your easements there are pretty huge.
I understand, but I'm saying the tree that's causing the issue is Wayne County's tree.
Yeah.
We have other issues with, we have a case open with the county as well to get the trees redone.
Okay.
So, we had a tree actually fall across Lakeland, narrowly missing our car. The city instructed us to spend the money to get the tree that's in the empty lot taken care of. So, we've had problems with this for a while, so any amount of pressure that you guys can help us with, to exert onto Wayne County?
If you can, if you contact, grab them on my cards before you leave, because we can certainly work with the county on that.
Yeah.
Their forestry division is literally two men in a truck, you know, they're ridiculously slow.
No, they're actually, no, I counted, because I bought them donuts and coffee.
They're down to...
Twelve guys.
They're probably down to...
And only three of them work, but that's not the point.
Yeah, I got you.
My point is, why am I being billed for Wayne County's tree causing my concrete issues? Now, I know they don't have a lot of money, but you know what? We don't have a lot of money either. I've been furloughed. I've heard she's taking a pay cut. I mean, we're in the middle of a pandemic. There's 30% unemployment. We're trying to save every dollar we can. And I'm not trying to get out of pain. There's concrete there that I know...
No, I mean, we're looking at it.
That we're responsible for.
Turn around. We're looking at it right now. It's...
That's which we understand. Like, we were already in, that, that issue right there with the trees. That's a great...
So, here's the issue with the county trees. We all have, you do have a huge easement there, which I figured you did, but we all have county trees in front of our homes, whether your easement is big like yours or normal size. Those trees are ultimately Wayne County's responsibility.
Right.
But the way the law reads, and the way the ordinance reads, and the way our liability is applied, the sidewalks belong to us, belong to you, belong to me, belong to the township.
Right.
So, when people, you know, when people slip and fall, we all get, we get sued. The township gets sued. You could potentially be sued, but they go after us, because we've got the deep pockets. But, you know, when you sue government, you're suing yourself, basically, and that's just less money that we have to spend on nice things. I understand the situation with the county with these particular trees, and I'd like to work with you guys on that. And I understand your concerns about the sidewalk slabs. I mean, I get that, and we're sensitive to that. So, I don't know, maybe Jeremy, if you want to see if we can get creative with some of those slabs and try to save as many as possible, either through mudjacking or through tree hacking, if that's a word?
Okay.
If we can try to help these guys out a little bit.
Yeah, the hacking, I don't, because of the way that that, on the left, the way that that tree, it's, we were already looking into getting it fixed, and then this is like the spring/summer project, so we are, we are responsible.
No, you recognize that. I mean, we all do. I get it.
It's been like that since before the previous homeowner. Again, anything past that, that's our responsibility, but there's gotta be a concession there for that tree causing that concrete issue. It really is.
And with the easement, is that, will that be part of the project? I mean, because right now, that's a really steep one, and... And the, and with the easement is that, will that be part of the project? I mean, because right now, that's a really steep one, and even across the street too, so there's people on bikes and they're going, you know.
Yeah, Jeremy, I don't know exactly. I mean, it looks like there's, uh, it's busted and there's a slope and everything. The tree has just been pushing everything.
Is that a silver maple or something else?
Oh, I.
They don't.
You don't know what type of tree it is?
It's just a tree that's a pain. I don't know.
There's like.
It's a maple, but I don't know if it's a silver one.
Jeremy, just want to go out there and try to see what we can do. Um, and the problem is, the precedent that we would establish is all of those trees that we all have in the township between the sidewalk and the curb, those are county trees.
Yes. We know. That big tree right there in the back, that's going to be another one, because actually that's leaning over. They're going to actually crush the housing.
Well, let me work with you guys on the trees, because we can, we, we can be a squeaky wheel. If you guys can talk to Jeremy and see, see what we can do, because we know you're in a tough spot.
Yeah.
And as far as pain, I mean, is there, you can spread it out over five years?
Five years, yeah.
All right, is there interest on that?
I don't think we're going to charge interest because the interest rate. Yeah, but. That was just us talking. I mean, right now, the interest rate basically in this country is zero, and I don't think we're out to, we're not out to make money here or be a disincentive or a bank or anything. So that's a decision that we, the board, have to make, but that's why we're doing the public hearing, because we want to hear from people.
I appreciate that.
I appreciate that. You know, like I said, we got the letter. It was very alarming, to see how much. Again, what are you paying the $5,000 for? I understand the majority of the, the, the concrete issues are around that tree, but not having an easement marked, we can't even get a quote. And actually, we've called contractors. We can't even get anyone to come out because they have been working, and now they just started and they're picking up where they left off with the previous job. So we're really swimming upstream on this. Looking at that and the amount of money to do it, Wayne County's $3,000, the majority of the issues, we're not trying to get out of any responsibility, but what's fair is fair. And I know Wayne County doesn't have a lot of money, but with that being said, you know, I would hope that some concessions would be made.
Um, can we talk about the quote, the estimate versus the actual quote? Because I know what business I'm in, and when you're actually talking about, you estimated out everyone's going to participate, so are the costs going to go up if everyone doesn't? Is that my que, that's a fair question?
Uh, no, the costs are by unit, and so it's paid for by the square foot, so however many square, how many, however many flags of sidewalk we remove, that's how much the contractor physically gets paid.
Okay.
So it's not a, it's not a lump sum.
So that's a set rate? We're not, it's not a group rate?
Yeah, it's not a lump sum. It's a unit price. So if we quoted you at 18, 19 slabs and you only ended up with 15, you only pay for the 15.
Okay. So the quote does not include anything to do with handling any of the tree roots at this time? Is that correct?
The, the quote does, but that's included in the, uh, unit price. The unit price for the square, for the square foot includes removing the roots six inches below grade.
Okay.
Could the quote go over the amount that was sent us?
Uh, it theoretically could, but we, like I said at the beginning, we're somewhat conservative on the number of flags that we called out in, in an effort to make sure that we weren't over.
Okay. Thank you for that. I appreciate that.
We usually plan to have it come under.
Yeah.
But we have a safety.
Yes.
Margin. Jeremy, how many square feet in a flag of concrete?
Uh, roughly 25.
325?
Yeah, no.
25.
25, 25.
We're at 475.
Yeah.
Yep.
All in. That's the entire, it's the whole sidewalk.
Right. Yep, 19 slabs.
19?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
But, but if half of the people do it themselves, the price doesn't go up, because only half are being done. It's per unit.
Okay.
So, so it was bid out and it per unit.
Okay, that helps out. Okay, that's what was the question. And then my other question is, is that, um, the empty lot across the street, how is that going to be handled? So directly across the street from us is an empty lot, so I turn on 5mile.
Well, it's a different city or township.
How is that going to be handled? Whoa, you're going wrong way. You're going into the lake. Turn around. No, that's, yeah, that's a lake. What I'm saying, across the street from us. Because we go out, our Lakeland is, yes, yes, in the southeast, southwest corner of Lakeland and 5mile. So one more over from this house. It's an empty lot. Is that going to be paved? That's a really good question. I don't know. I've been told the township doesn't own it, and then when that tree came down, the county came out to fix it, so I don't know.
We don't, we do not, we don't own it. We don't.
You don't own the lot?
I would assume that it's privately owned by somebody.
No, it's not. I mean, if it is, then that's a whole. Yeah, we can't.
Is this something that was left over from the M14 construction?
No.
No, it's too far from M14. Yeah, so it's on, it's on 5mile and Lakeland, so.
Who'll look it up? Because I'm curious now.
Yeah, we, we can, we can.
Who, yeah. I can't get a, where do I look it up?
Well, we have the parcel maps, and if, and if there's no ownership, then we'd sure like to know why as well.
Yeah, I, I mean, you know, our, our neighbor takes care of it, but we can't, honest to God, like, we've called here, they say it's county property, and then, you know.
Unincorporated, oh, okay.
So it's a no man's land.
It's a no man's land.
Yes, it's just sitting there and like.
Well, we, I'm sure somebody owns it.
But is, is there, would you be, is that going to get sidewalk as well?
I, I don't know. Jeremy, if.
Yeah, yeah, are we talking about the southeast corner of 5mile and Lakeland?
Yes, that's what I.
Yeah, the.
South west. We're on the southeast, even though we have 5mile. The easement is not.
Well, there's obviously no sidewalk there.
No, which is like, it's the steep.
I don't know, Jeremy, did you guys ever even examine that site or no?
What, where were you talking about?
I'm talking about, see, we get, can we check the vines out?
There you go. No, 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 go up there.
See what the street sign is on the easement?
Yeah.
That, that's like, uh, it's dirt, it's gravel, there's chunks of concrete.
And it's extremely steep, and so what happens is no one goes up it, and then they go around the grass. I don't care about the grass. It's just safety. Like, if we're talking about safety, then we have to address that. Not that I want to add more to the bill, but, you know, that's another app.
Well, as long as you guys don't own it.
Well, the county does, but if somebody falls on it, guess who, who are they going to call? The county?
Well, if it is an eas.
You know what I mean? They're going to land on the side, you know, I don't know. It's just, it needs to be handled.
No, we've walked it. We, we know.
Yeah, that's the whole picture.
Well, uh, okay, so we got various issues here. Let's, let's take care of your issues first, and then also then, Jeremy, I know you're taking notes. Let's just find out who, who was responsible for that vacant parcel.
Okay.
Should, should we wait to hear from you in regards to any, any updates or?
Take my card on the tree issues, okay, but, but on the sidewalk stuff, you still got to deal with Jeremy, okay?
Are we talking the, the vacant parcel on the southeast corner of Lakeland and 5mile? Is that?
If that's what they're looking at, yeah.
Okay, because that, that in the GIS shows as part of the Wayne County's right of way.
Wayne County right of way?
Yeah, it doesn't show as a separate parcel at this point.
Uh.
It's a large, it's a large right of way that goes up to the next house on Lakeland, from 5mile to the next house on Lakeland.
Wow.
Yeah, so.
Well, then let's make Wayne County.
So this is not a taxable parcel per the documentation that we have. It appears to be part of Wayne County's right of way.
We could certainly see if they'd be interested in building a sidewalk there, but. They can be part of our sidewalk program, and we'll build them. Hmm, yeah, yeah. Okay.
If you, if you could send me an email at thesidewalks@plymouthtownship.org, that'd be great. Or the hotline, leave me a message, and then we'll get it scheduled from there.
Sorry to take you so much.
No, that's cool. It's fine. Yeah, it's fine. Okay. You're next. Thank you.
Yeah, I've been living here about 27 years, and, uh, like you said, a problem with the trees. The problem with the trees is that brought up the sidewalk there. Then from digging up the road and widening it, killed the tree. So about five years ago or so, I called because the sidewalk was rising. So when I called city, oh, they sent this out here. They blacktopped it.
Right.
That was five years ago.
Okay.
What's your address, sir?
Uh, 9644 Hagerty, ready across from the fire department. So, you know, I understand it has to be fixed, because, you know, that's why I called, I didn't want anybody getting hurt.
Yeah.
Now, it says it's 525. That sounds reasonable, but one thing I don't like in here is the clause that says, if they cause any other damage to concrete, I'm responsible for it. Who hires somebody to work like that?
I'll ask our township engineer. You want to answer that one?
Because I just had a driveway put in two years ago. They did, if they would have damaged the sidewalk, they would have been responsible for it. So I don't mind paying for it, even though maybe the city should help pay half, but hey, that's only wishful thinking on my part. But they should be responsible if they caused any damage.
Yeah, and that.
They're professionals, aren't they?
They are, and that, and that's not the language that's in the contract that we bid out. Uh, that's just from the sample.
It says a note right there.
That, that's the sample, sample letter that we send out. Uh, I don't know if that's something that, you know, from, from years past, but, uh.
I don't know either.
Our, our, the contract, the contract though says that they have, they're responsible for damage.
They're, they're responsible for any damage that they caused to the property.
So all I would have to pay for is the initial problem that they set.
Whatever, whatever we marked out. I think the intent of that message was if we see, when we get out there, that there are additional areas that have heaved or have cracked and need to be replaced, that they could replace it at that time, but it's not intended to be if they broke it with their equipment, then you got to pay for it. That's not the intent.
All righty, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Next, I think this gentleman over here.
Andrew Holcomb, 9702 Terry Street, almost across the street, but not quite.
Terry, you're on Terry?
Terry?
Yep. Yep.
Um, first and foremost, as a lot of people have said already, at least I think a lot of people have said, it's really hard to hear out there, but, uh, the timing of this, really poor. We really, really should consider postponing it possibly until next year. I know the pictures were taken last year, over a year ago, actually. I spoke with Zach from your firm. Zach did tell me, like he told a lot of other people, that he can't tell me which slabs need to be replaced. He sent me the picture that they took, and it was basically the 80% of my sidewalk. Now, my bill says I have four squares that need to be replaced. I can't identify four of them that can be replaced. I can identify maybe a couple of them, but, uh, the picture shows about six or seven of the, of the squares. So to not have, to not have us know exactly what, what needs to be done, I think is a little ridiculous, but, you know, that's, that's another story there. We're under a national pandemic. We're under a national emergency. I personally have been laid off for going on three months now. Never been laid off in my life. It sucks. The unemployment money is not cutting it. I don't have an extra $1,000, $1,100 to spend right now. I don't think anybody does, to be honest with you. Now, you guys present in this room probably haven't missed an hour of work since this thing started, and I applaud you for it, and you should feel very grateful for it. There's a lot of us that are not in that boat right now. So the timing on this, especially knowing that this was done over a year ago, to me is poor, and it should be put off.
Does it matter if you have five years no interest to pay up?
It would help, and tonight was the first time I heard that.
Yeah.
So that was.
And again, we're not trying to, I don't know, fool anybody, because we don't make that decision until, until tonight, really, and based on the input that we get.
Right.
Based on the cost estimates and everything that we've received from the engineers, so.
Well, sure, it's going to make a huge difference. It's going to make a huge difference.
Well, it would make, sure. I mean, I think to most folks, if you can pay this off over five years. And again, we're, we don't want to be a bank either. We're not trying to make, make money off of this stuff at all. We, you know, obviously, we don't, it, it's no fun for us either, you know?
Right.
These are never, these are never fun.
Understood.
So.
Understood, so.
And the pictures were taken last year because we started this program last year, and the bids were outrageous, so we postponed it.
Okay.
We got better bids.
Okay.
And so that's why the pictures are a year ago.
And I'll tell you what, that was a point of frustration when I did speak with Zach on the phone, and he emailed me the picture, and I knew from other things that were going on in the picture, I knew exactly when it was taken. And looking at it and saying, okay, now I have basically a month to pony up this money is, is, as, as far as I knew coming in tonight, was that, you know, I had less than a month to come up with $1,050, so, um, so I hope that you guys take that under consideration.
Yeah.
Um, you know, a lot of us out there are in the same boat. And the other thing is, is that when you call a hearing like this and you invite a lot of people, and we show up and we're out there, you can't hear a darn thing out there. You can't hear a darn thing.
Hopefully, we won't have to be doing it like this much further, but we, it's a, it's a real challenge in a balancing act to comply with the governor's orders and, and your constitutional rights to appear in a public hearing.
Right. Agreed. So how do I find out exactly which slabs need to be replaced? I didn't email, but I did call Zach, and basically his answer to me was, we can't do anything until you open up a building permit. I actually did have a concrete guy come out and take a look. Actually, he was doing a job in the area, so I had him come over and look. He couldn't identify four slabs either, but.
So we're, uh, we were just asking for you to pull a, a building permit so that we can keep the locations orderly and we know who we've marked slabs for. Uh, but if you call me and you're, you provide a response in the email or in the phone that you'd like to me to come out onsite and go through them with you, I can do that.
Okay, so how do I get ahold of you?
Uh, either through my card. I can give you my card or through the, um, sidewalks@plymouthtownship.org.
Okay. Let me take your card. I'll do it that way.
Okay, no problem.
Cool. Thanks, you guys.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Next. Tim Doyle.
Hagerty Road.
How you doing, Ted?
You heard a complaint about that, uh, that pavilion out in front of your house or something?
I've got a question for you.
Okay.
I just want to know what piece of sidewalk that they're measuring.
Yep, no problem.
11302 Hagerty, right?
Yep.
No, Hagerty Road.
Right here.
Oh, that house.
Okay.
11302 Hagerty.
11302.
Yeah.
We can, Tim, we can have our engineers come out and, and check it out for you.
Yeah, we can, uh, send you the pictures and kind of the location, and I can even meet you out there and go through them with you.
No pictures?
Huh?
We have pictures.
Yeah, but he doesn't want that. He wants them to come out.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll do that for you.
I have your email.
If, if I have somebody fix it, you want me to call you?
Uh, if, if you're going to have somebody do it for you, then we'll just need to fill out a quick permit, just so we know to pull it from the program.
That's fine.
Send the contractor out there and have them do it.
Probably I'm not.
I can come out there with a, with a can of.
Probably not going to do that, but I just wanted to know what, what piece of concrete it is.
Okay.
He's going to come out to the house. He'll call you and.
Yeah.
Okay.
He's got your information.
Take care of it.
Okay?
Yep. Sounds good.
Okay. Let's have our next person, uh, is he, what's he up to? Tim, we know how to get ahold of you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Send me an email or whatever. I just want to know which piece it is.
Okay. Yep, no problem. I can probably even come out, uh, Thursday for sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay, thank you. Tracy. Yeah, you did. You're, you, it's been a busy day.
Okay, um, I actually thought that you had the wrong house. Oh, sorry. Is that good? It's, uh, 11620, wait, 11267 Morgan Avenue.
What, what, what's?
11267 Morgan Avenue.
67?
11267. Yeah. Uh, I took pictures. I brought pictures, but you might have them too. Um, I guess, after I hear everybody, I do have a tree out there, a large tree, and.
Tracy Lewis.
Yep. Yep. Yeah. So, um, I had a contractor, again, the cement guy that was in the area, look at it too, and assured me that I was in compliance of this 11. and assured me that I was in compliance of this eleven point six oh two. And I know there was, like, two years ago, there was one that, that, uh, I can't even remember what was wrong with that.
Have you, has somebody done some crack ceiling there over the years? Crack ceiling?
Um, no.
Looks like a- Ceiling of cracks in the, in the slabs. Looks like a slab was replaced.
No, not at all.
Okay. Well, I mean, it looks like you got a tree problem there. And again, it's, I don't know if you heard me before, but we, we really are-
That one was replaced.
Yeah, what year, do you remember?
Two years, I think two years ago.
Two years ago?
Yeah.
The township didn't do it then.
Had to be both.
You've-
It was a private job.
It was on my taxes, so.
Yeah, you've got a couple in the driveway that look like they have, uh, you know, some decent sized cracks. I think that's what, what they're looking at. I'm more than happy to come out and look at it with you, though, and walk through it.
Okay, yeah, that's what I need. Cause I don't know what-
And Tracy, I don't know if you heard me before, but, uh, we, we really, we're, we, we can't cut down trees. We don't want, we certainly don't want to. But what we would like to do is remove as much of the tree roots as possible so that we can make the slab level. But that's only if the slab is not cracked. And I, it just looks like there, you may already have some, some cracks that almost look like they were, see right there.
There's not a crack.
That's not a crack?
That is not a crack.
It's just stain of some sort?
That, yeah, that is not a-
Okay, good.
That, that's what's so surprising. There are no cracks.
Well, that's good.
Yeah, you've got two that are six inch, which indicate they're in the driveway. And then you have two that are four inch, which indicate they're outside. So those are probably due to the tree.
So in the driveway, that's what you're?
Yeah, I think those two crack, if I, I, I don't have it in front of me, but if I had to guess, I'm assuming it's in the driveway, those two cracks right there, those two flags, those are, you, cause your, your assessment shows a, um, six inch sidewalk, and that's, that's for driveways. Because four inches isn't thick enough, otherwise you'd crush it with your car.
Okay. All right, so.
But I can come out and look at it with you if you'd like.
Okay.
So Jeremy, just looking at that picture.
Yep.
What makes that a four or a five?
So, I mean, it's, it's sometimes, sometimes deceiving to tell exactly what the issue is. But the width of the crack, the height of the crack, and sometimes the tilt of it as well. So there's a number of factors. We go through and rate all five factors, one through five. And if any of those factors is over a four, uh, is a four or over, then we automatically flag that as replacement. So most of them have multiple issues with them.
How do I do that? Because I would like a contractor with, with me. I don't want just to be me out there with you or whoever's gonna come out and explain this. I want somebody there.
Okay.
Who knows? So how, how would I do that? How would I set that up?
Sidewalks.
Okay.
It's in your letter.
Yeah.
Sidewalks@plymouthtwp.org.
Okay.
I just tell them that you want to schedule a, um, site visit.
Okay.
To go through the sidewalk flags.
And I have the same issues as everybody else. The Terry guy said it much more eloquently than I can. But out of a job, not sure when I'm gonna get a job, no income, so I'm in the same boat. Um, I'm-
Does it help if we give you five years, zero interest to pay for it?
Of course, of course. I mean, I would have to because there, I wouldn't, I wouldn't pay for it if you did this by July third. I, there's no way I could. Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
Is there anyone else he, he present? Anyone present? All right, uh, thank you very much. Now, we're not done yet, so, uh, I need to, we have three people on the phone regarding the sidewalk program, we think. All right, so, so Bob, just, no, that's Laura Haw. So just Bob, just one at a time then. Okay, Brooke Light is on the phone. Brooke, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you. Um, you've got the floor.
Okay, um, I just, um, some of my questions have been, um, or my comments have been reiterated by, uh, a lot of the other people about just being discouraged by the, um, spots not being marked, even with the pictures that I received from the, um, engineer. I still, um, it's very, it's hard to tell what exactly, um, needs to, which ones need to be replaced. Um, and then my other question is that, um, the letter, I couldn't hear the answers to this, but the letter indicates that the repairs would need to be done by July third. However, on the Township Sidewalk Ordinance, it states that we would have sixty days from the vote date, which would be today. So it would be sixty days from today, which is not July third.
Yeah, we have answered that question. And Jeremy, I don't know if you're gonna be able to hear Jeremy, but Jeremy, can you try to answer that again, please?
Uh-
Hold on, let's, let's, first things first. I'll get to that. Jeremy, first?
Yeah, yeah, so this is, uh, the Plymouth Township Administrative Guide for Sidewalks goes through a number of, um, various scenarios on timing. And usually what happens is, uh, bids are taken in May, the official notices are sent out in June. And then, uh, the public hearing would be at the end of June. And the replacements would be required by the end of July, which gives you less than thirty days for replacement. We put out these letters in an effort to give as much time as possible. But what we're dealing with is around thirty-seven thousand square foot of sidewalk that needs to be replaced within the calendar year. And just based on timing, that puts us two to two and a half months out. If we start in early July, that puts us into, you know, October, mid-October.
So, did you hear that?
Um, kind of. So it would start in July and would be finished in October.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, we need, could, could we have your address, too?
Yeah, it's one four five nine six Shadywood.
Did you guys get that? Shadywood, one four- One four five nine six Shadywood. Okay. You have two parcels?
No, it's the same address.
Yeah.
Um, we, we do. We have like, um, a little extension of our backyard that I believe was repurchased back from the, um, by the previous owner.
It is two parcels.
Okay. Okay, um, yep.
Just my, my last point, I just wanted to just really, um, reiterate the financial hardships that many families are dealing with during this pandemic with all the layoffs and pay cuts. And, um, you know, really like even, you know, my husband's been working from home, but he's, he had a thirty percent pay cut. And things like that that are making it, will make it significantly hard for people to come up with the money or even afford, we're juggling trying to get two kids back in daycare as soon as possible and being an essential worker and even finding the time to like look into getting a private contractor. Like more time would be, I, I understand, I appreciate the five years, no interest. Um, and that would be helpful, definitely. But I think even giving more time to get this, for people to be allowed to, um, find their own contractors if they want to, would be very helpful.
Sure, okay. Uh, for my benefit again, maybe I missed it. If someone is going to arrange their own work through a contractor or do it themselves, when must they really have it done?
So the direction right now provided in the letter is that they need to have that done by July third. July fourth is when the contractor starts work physically. Obviously, we have thirty-seven thousand square foot of sidewalk after that, so there's gonna be some time. But the letter right now, as it states, is July third.
Okay, so effectively, it's not doable unless you're gonna do it yourself between now and July third. That's a month. When I say do it yourself, actually buy the concrete and pour it.
I'm having a hard time understanding what anyone's saying.
Yeah, we're, we're talking here. It's not, it's just, we're talking about the timelines again, so.
Okay.
Okay, uh, are we all set then for now? Brooke? Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, we have a phone number that ends in three nine three. If that's your phone number, you're on the air.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi, hi, uh, this is Elise and Eric Harrison, uh, four zero nine two eight Greenbrier Lane.
Hold on, what's the, we just need, we know you're on Greenbrier, but we're, uh, we're hunting, hunting down the, uh, address. What's the address again?
Four zero nine two eight-
Yep, I got, we got you.
Harrison?
Yep, Harrison. Okay, what's your question or concern?
Sure, uh, you know, a lot of people reiterated some of my concerns. I agree with Brooke about the timing. Um, and as far as, um, you know, the marking of the property, it stands out at the fact that the engineers took pictures, but they didn't take the time to mark them and then take pictures of them. So our situation is somewhat unique. We have spots that are maybe a half inch, um, raised. One of those spots is shared with a neighbor, so I don't know whose responsibility it is. The other spot is located, um, it's adjacent to our driveway where it meets the street. So this is, uh, we have a manhole on that part of our driveway and it's raised three inches. And so we have concerns. I've spent two years trying to get ahold of Wayne County. And I, what I heard today was that you guys would communicate with Wayne County, um, in dealing with a sidewalk piece, I think is what they wanted, but I'm not sure again, because they were not marked. I got pictures. I'm not sure why I got pictures that weren't marked, because it seems kind of backwards if you're gonna pick pictures. You might as well mark it. Uh, but I basically need to be assured that if I'm gonna have my driveway fixed or pay money to have my driveway fixed, I would like, uh, it all to be done at the right time, at the same time, so that we don't have issues like this again. And we have a Wayne County issue also. So, yeah, it, it sounds like a tree root also. I heard that over and over again, so.
So what we would like to do, and I'm looking at the township engineer here, what we'd like to do is, should you guys go out there and take a look at it? Um, I mean, I, I think we can agree that some of those slabs-
We did have him come out. We did have him come out. His name was, so, oh, that was Wayne County came out. Um, a gentleman, actually, no, a gentleman from the township came out. And after I called the engineer with that number, and he came out and he said, I called the next day to say, did he come out? I got, I had this issue. And he said, oh, he came out and he said there wasn't a problem. I said, no, I have my tape measure. It's three inches. And my daughter has put down it like five times. And she's, all my children write their heights on here, and this is a, there's a manhole on this.
Yeah.
And so then he came out the next day and said, well, I have to talk to Carol from the township. So I, I, basically, I want more time so that if I'm gonna do this, I want it to be done right. And I want to be able to, you know, make it sure it's done all at the same time versus a copy here and there.
Right. Okay, now we got you. I, I think this requires another trip by the engineers. And then as far as the manhole cover goes, uh, Mr. Kermy, I think you had mentioned that historically, we, the township, will take care of the, uh, concrete work around the, around the manholes. Um, we wouldn't do your whole driveway, but we would at least take care of that, uh, that slab portion of the driveway, the way it looks right now. The township will pay for it, is what he means. The township would pay for it.
Yeah, oh, so that's good news. But I, I would like it all to be done, or at least, uh, sidewalks that needs to be repaired is adjacent to the manhole. So those certainly need to be done at the same time.
Yeah.
Um, and so I guess my question would be, could we have time if we wanted to, once we talked to your engineer, have time if we wanted to replace our whole driveway? It sounded like we could have essentially up until October, when your whole project is gonna be done.
Yeah. No, I, I think what you should do is let's, let's wait and see what we decide on tonight with respect to the whole program. And then if we proceed, then if you could work with our engineers so that, I, I know what you're trying to do. You want to do it all at once. I get that. And we'll, we'll work with you on that. Oh, sure.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll, we'll work with you on that. Okay?
One last simple question. Can you shave this down if it's done right? As opposed to replacing the three?
Can you repeat the question? You're, you're coming in real foggy here.
So, so is it, so perhaps we send for the contractor to do it all, it all at the same time? And it doesn't work out so that we want to get it all done at the same time? Is it a possibility to shave down or grind down the half inch?
No, we're, we're not in favor of grinding down cement because that has proven not to last very long. And it can also create uneven surfaces that people ultimately trip on.
Okay, now I heard you talk about lifting or muddying. I, I wasn't sure about that. I just-
Yes, we will allow mudjacking, uh, as long as it does not crack the concrete, but we will allow mudjacking.
Okay, well, we're hopeful to talk to the engineer and make sure that those pieces are all done. And if we could, possibly, we might be interested in repairing, um, more things all at once, that that would make more sense for us.
Oh, no, I understand. And I think, again, uh, let us, let us take this to the next step and then we'll have the engineer go out and meet with you. And then we can coordinate your project with ours.
Perfect.
Okay.
Okay, I understand. So will we, will you reach out to us or do we reach out to you?
I think what you should do is reach out to us on the email that we sent out. It's sidewalks@plymouthtwp.org. It's in your letter.
Yes, we did talk to Ed and he wasn't sure. He just sent us the pictures. We had nothing to say, other than here are your pictures.
Right, and, and now we know more, so we can, we can work with you guys on that.
All right, I will not take up too much time from everybody else. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, Mr. Jenks? We have nobody else? No other hands are raised then, okay. Okay, now, we're not done yet. On sidewalks? Sure? We have someone on the phone whose phone number ends in seven nine nine. If that's you, you're on the air. Going once? Okay. We're all set. All right, now, we're not done yet. So I would like, as part of the public hearing, I would like to enter into the minutes, the charts that were prepared by Jeremy. And do you just want to reiterate what those were again, for the record? Well, I'm on Jeremy right now.
Yeah, so, uh, what, what I provided to you earlier was a list of email responses and phone call responses that we've gotten since these letters have been sent out. There's roughly a hundred and sixty-four responses out of the five hundred and seventy-one, uh, participants in the program.
So which one is really the email ones, since they're titled the same email?
There's, um, the email list is the one with seventy, or with sixty-nine, with, uh, sixty-nine residents. And then the phone is the, uh, one with a little bit more than that, about ninety-five. Yep.
Are you talking, so you're not entering the pie chart?
The, there's two different pie charts. The pie charts are just to show you a rough distribution of what the concerns were. And by and large, the concerns were the location of the sidewalk. They wanted to know exactly which sidewalks were being requested to be replaced. Uh, outside of that, we got a, a, a decent number of residents questioning what the inspection criteria was. Inspection criteria is obviously provided as a part of the public notice. And then we had a, a separate handout that went in the letters as well. But we helped explain that to anybody who responded. Some-
I don't think it would be our intent to include the pie chart. I think that's just instructive. I think the idea is that we have the addresses of people who, who responded, uh, via the letter, via email and/or the phone call to your office.
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
And then amongst that, I, I visited, uh, sites of probably about seven different residents to go through in, in detail.
Seven, did you say?
Seven.
Seven. How many did Zach visit, do you think?
Um, I don't believe Zach visited any. I visited all of the residents myself.
Okay, cause we've had quotes attributed to Zach here tonight, so.
Yeah, because Zach, Zach has contacted people through, through voicemail.
Okay.
So what we did was just based on the volume, we wanted to get timely responses back out. I delegated some of the responses with canned responses for a number of residents. Uh, since we were getting such, so many of the same response.
Right.
We provided, you know.
Okay.
A uniform response.
All right, well, I'll just ask that that be entered into the record for tonight, as far as the public hearing goes. Uh, at this time, Mr. Jenks, do we have anybody on the line? Okay, if your phone number ends with the numbers- Okay, if your phone number ends with the numbers 799, you are now on the air.
Thank you. My name's Davis Doyle, D-O-Y-L-E. We're at 15250 Thornridge. We only got one letter, and we would need the contact for the engineer, because we cannot tell which block of our sidewalk needs repair. Could you read that information for those of us that are on the phone?
Sure, what we can do is, you, you need, you need information on what slabs were flagged, correct?
Correct.
Right. Have you contacted the engineers via the phone number or the email address?
We got neither on the left side.
You got, you, you did not even get a letter?
We got one letter, we got no pictures, and we got no description of the problem.
Okay. Sure. If you get out your, get out a pencil and paper right now, and what I'll do is, I'll, I'll give you the email address. It's very simple, it's sidewalks@plymouthtwp.org. And, and that, that will put you in touch with our township engineer, and they can get you all of the information that you're looking for. And if necessary, they can even make a site visit. Okay? Okay, we got your address again, we're all set on that, Jeremy?
Yeah.
Got the address? Okay, I think we're all set. Thanks. Okay, what's the number? Okay, if you're on the phone right now, and your phone number ends in the numbers 875, you are on the air with the Board of Trustees.
Hi, good evening, evening, everybody. My name is Luke Forster. I live at 1502 Thornridge Drive. And I want to kind of echo the same concerns that we've sort of been hearing all night, but I, I ask, since calling in via Zoom, it has been, this is more, more of an observation than anything, kind of a frustrating exercise. It's, it's been very difficult to hear a lot of what's happened, so I do apologize if I repeat, you know, questions that have been answered two, three, or four times. But, you know, just from our standpoint here on the phone, it has been incredibly difficult to hear. I know that I've kind of been back and forth with a few folks on the neighborhood Facebook page, and they've been saying the same thing, so just maybe something to consider moving forward. But much like the, the previous caller, we're, we're in the same boat. We just received a letter out of the blue. I did respond to the email address for the township, but the, the response we got was very unsatisfying. We did ask for more information, and the information on the contractor, the engineers, anything. And the response was really just that we, as homeowners, were responsible for the repairs. So, I, I understand that there, there are channels to go through, but we have attempted to do that already. So, I guess we're looking for a little more straightforward information. Is there anybody else that we may be able to talk to for that information? Or, you know, do we need to continue trying to go through these channels?
Sure.
You know, this, this whole, this whole situation has been incredibly frustrating. You know, like you mentioned before, the timeframe, financial constraints, you know, there seem to be a lot of factors that are really working against this project in terms of, you know, how, how it is on the end of the residence. So, I, I think, I would hope the township to be more, less, more, a little more understanding in its responses, and more informative, really throughout this whole process.
Sure. What we'd like to do is, let's give you the engineer's phone number. His name is Jeremy, and his number is 248-
844-
844-
6279.
6279. And you can, and you can also still use that, that email that we gave you. I mean, they, we'll, we'll, we will do our best to respond. It may not be as good as a face, as a, as a phone call. So, we're giving you the phone number first. And, and you may end up getting some information on the email as well, and with respect to slab locations and things like that. And we're also open to a personal visit, too.
Um, you know, and, and again, I apologize if you've heard this over and over tonight, but, you know, the timing, the organization, and the communication just really has left a lot to be desired on this project. And I, I can't say that I'm 100% behind it as a resident. I mean, you know, every, everybody wants beautiful flat sidewalks. To take the issue, they look great, I don't think anyone's gonna argue that. But, I, I mean, we have to understand from our side, and as residents, I'm sure you do too. But, you, you know, the timeframe in which this was given, I mean, there's even a, there's a full week of lag time between the date of the letter and the postage date. So, I mean, and then it was even several days after that. I mean, it just seems like every time, the project has been delayed, and just one thing after another working against the residents. So, you know, I think there's a lot more frustration than, certainly I've heard on our end tonight, and that might be a phone issue. But I just want to, I, I haven't, I felt like I haven't heard it as much as I've seen it on the chat rooms and speaking with my neighbors, and I just want to try to communicate it again. Just, just so that you understand how frustrated we are with this process.
Okay, now, we, we hear you. Uh, so, you got the phone number, and I would give, have you call the engineer, and we'll take it from there.
Okay, well, I'll hand out the phone number, make sure my neighbors have it as well. I appreciate the time, and I appreciate your attention, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Jenks, anybody else? Okay. This is very unprecedented, I have not allowed two people, the same person, to speak twice. But if your phone number ends with 799, you're still on the air.
You spoke with my husband, Mr. Doyle, this is Catherine Doyle. And the only thing I have to reiterate is, the letter was submitted May 7th, and we received it on May 22nd. And now, this is June 2nd, and repairs need to be made by July 3rd.
Okay.
So, my only comment is to reiterate on the last person that I agree with what he-
Okay, we hear you. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Jenks, anybody else? Somebody is communicating with us through a computer, the letters D E L. If that's you, you're on the air.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, right. My name is Delfer Merrick, and I live at 39594 Thornridge. And I also would like to reiterate and get on the record that the letter did come late. It took several days before somebody responded to me to give me the phone number. And I did, I also wanted to say that I was able to find a contractor to come out and give me an estimate. And when he looked at the sidewalk, he said that it didn't even meet code. The slabs were to be four inches deep, and these slabs were only two inches. So, my question to you is, have the decoding requirements or standards, have they changed since 1967? Do not.
The question is about the sidewalk standards? Thickness?
What was the, the thickness was the question?
Thickness, I think the thickness is the question?
Yeah.
Okay, no, I mean, the standard hasn't changed in quite a few years. It's, it's four inch most places throughout the state for a standard sidewalk. That's not to say that contractors didn't place the sidewalk less than four inches throughout time. Standard's always been four inches.
The standard has always been four inches. We don't know if your slab was installed differently, but that's, that's the standard, and it's been that way for quite some time.
Okay, well, according to my contractor, it was not four, the four inches deep. It was only four to two inches, which may have caused the problem that is, is, that we're addressing today currently.
So, you're- So, your contractor, your contractor pour, your contractor poured it for two inches? Is that what you've been told? No.
Back in 1967, yes. Because the contractor I got out to give an estimate last week, looked at, and he goes, lady, this isn't even according code. I'm going, what are you talking about? He goes, it's only two inches deep, and it should have been four inches. And I'm going, well, I don't know what the code was back in 1967, that was when the house was built. And we were, we were not the original owners, my lady.
So, somebody cheated in 1967, that's all? Because it's always been the width of a two by four.
Yeah, exactly, it's, it's-
Okay. Okay, okay, so here's what we're gonna do. We need your address again, could you just say that again for us, so we make sure we got the right person here?
39594 Thornridge, D-I-R-C-H-Wood.
I, I think this requires a visit by the township engineer staff to, to take a look at it. You have the email and the phone number that's in the letter that you received from the township. So, if you could circle back with them, and they'll, and they'll also try to reach out to you. But you need to, you need to call them at that number, or through the email address that was given to you.
Yeah, but it's really quite interesting, I don't know, I haven't gotten the picture, you obviously have it somewhere in your database, but it's actually crumbling, it's, it's, it's almost like sand. And the contractor I had out, I never seen it before, you know, unless it has that code. He was eyes estimate, he was not. And I did a walkthrough through my phone edition, and I'm the only one who has concrete that is literally looking like sand, and just deteriorating it, where I've seen the cracks and the elevations and everything. Not the way that mine is growing yet.
Well, it certainly sounds like something went terribly wrong, and maybe back in 1967, as Trustee Kermy pointed out, maybe somebody cut some corners there. But we'll, we'll have to take a closer look at that one, and, and we'll have to work with you on it.
All right, fair enough. I also would like to make my final comment is, you know, it's difficult to assume, I didn't hear a lot of the responses from the people asking the questions. But I would also like you to consider maybe postponing the repairs for at least another year due to the economic situation that we're all in.
We will certainly take that into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jenks, anyone else? Okay. We have Michelle on a computer, you're on the air.
Hi, this is Michelle Luna. I'm at 10016 Wolf River Drive. The letter I received stated 75 square feet to be replaced, which would be three segments. And I sent an email, and the picture shows-
Wolf River.
Two very obvious segments-
Wolf River.
That are seized by tree roots, which I know was talked about already with the Wayne County trees. And then the third segment, I'm not, I'm still not sure which segment that is, I don't know if it'll be marked. I've heard people talk about meeting with the inspector, so I would request that meeting as well.
Yeah, sure. We've got your address, 10016 Wolf River. And you've got our email, thesidewalks@plymouthtwp.org.
Yeah, I, I sent an email, and the email response showed a picture of the two main segments, so I'm still wondering about what the third segment would be. I have quite a bit there on the corner, so everything looks kind of the same, and it's not clear.
Okay, we can, uh- Yeah, we can check that out with you guys and see, we're actually looking at your home right now on, on GIS.
Yeah, it looks, it looks like it's a, it's a noticeable tilt, is what the notes say. I can see the two slabs, for sure, that are out of whack. There's a third potentially tie-in slab that might be needed. Like I said, kind of early on, we were somewhat conservative in our sidewalk totals, so that we didn't give you a number that was going to be under what your final assessment was. So, in this instance, potentially, it's just gonna end up being two slabs. But we had that third one there, just in case we need to tie it in.
So, I don't know if you heard all that, but we're, we're, we're looking probably just at two slabs, but we, we want to be conservative in our estimates. And again, if you heard us earlier, we're, we're certainly not trying to be in the sidewalk business here, but we, we're, we're trying to minimize the number of slabs that have to be replaced. It looks like if that tree there is creating, that big tree in front of your house, if that's creating some issues with the roots, you know, we would be happy to go in there and, and cut out as much of the root system as we can, so we can lay down those two slabs again, flat.
Okay, yeah, I think that, that's the way to go with those tree roots. Okay. And my next point is, so I was already calling contractors to do some work on my patio and such. I called seven contractors, and they're all booked for the rest of the summer. And one of them has already swamped with phone calls from Plymouth. And there was one guy who could come out to do it, and I'm not sure I was satisfied with his quality of work. So, I guess my point is, as others have said, this is really not the best year for us to be doing this.
Yeah.
Another, another, my, my other family resides in Ann Arbor, and they just went through a sidewalk millage. I don't know if that's been discussed in the township at all, to add it into property taxes. That might be a way to go to streamline this in the future.
Well, that's how we pay for the sidewalk program? It goes on your property taxes, and you can pay it all at once? Or you can pay it off over five years at zero interest?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm talking, I think I'm talking about a millage.
Oh, no. Yeah, well, I, I, I don't think a millage would be, would be welcomed in the township for, for sidewalks.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, we're all set, then? Okay, thanks. Mr. Jenks, anybody else? Okay. So, it is 9:07, according to my clock. And I don't think there's anything else that I need to do, Jeremy, at this point. Gary Vorva, anything you can think of? All right, so it's 9:07, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Supervisor.
To close the public hearing at sidewalks.
Nice to hear from you again, Gary. Motion made by Trustee Heitman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Clerk Vorva, do you have to take the role?
Supervisor Heisey.
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton. Yes. Trustee Kermy.
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz.
Yes.
Clerk Forva, yes. Trustee Dempsey.
Yes.
Trustee Heitman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. What I would like to do right now, I know we are jumping all over the, or, the agenda here, but I'd like to get Laura Haw home. And I'd like to move the, I know I'm not supposed to be moving the agenda around like this, but I would like to get the temporary COVID-19 outdoor dining standards issue teed up right now. So, do you want to come up here? We're, Laura, we, we are, we're running out of time to talk about the park issue, so we're gonna bring that back for next week. But I do know that it's very timely and urgent that we get this other item taken care of. The board's been, what was, we did talk about this last week at our meeting, and you've got, we've got the cover memo there. A lot of other communities are doing this right now. We've had several requests from restaurants and other dining establishments in the township who are looking to expand their dining out beyond their four walls, so that they can comply with the various COVID-related health standards and safety standards. So, Laura, you can take it from there. This is the, yeah, we're, I'm sorry, Bob, we're, this is the last item on the agenda? No, it's further down.
It's like page 43 of, of the PDF.
That's, that's it. So, Laura, you want to take it from here?
Certainly, thank you, and good evening, trustees. And the memo is pretty self-explanatory. This really aims at trying to help local businesses and offset the impact that they may be facing. that they may be facing for their inside capacity. And we've seen this done in a number of communities, as Supervisor Heisey remarked. And there were some questions about the proposed resolution and permit that I believe were circulated today. I just wanted to add that the November 1st, 2020 expiration date is also tied to the Michigan Liquor Control Commission's temporary expiration date, which is October 31st. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Any questions from anybody?
The ones that I had on the phone. I didn't read my email if you sent it to me, but I said tonight you would. Did you get my phone message?
Yeah, we responded via email.
Yes, so the, uh, the question's, how many requests has the township received recently? At least two requests in planning and other inquiries in the supervisor's office. Um, probably likely in building as well, but I can't speak for them. Does the resolution comply with the establishments that sell alcohol? They're still responsible for compliance with the Michigan Liquor Control Commission. Um, and I believe Supervisor Heisey sent out a frequently asked questions attachment. If you're in-
Oh, yeah, from the LCC, yeah.
Yes, about, about the reopening policies and their limited outdoor service. And then there was another question regarding what are other communities doing for businesses that want to expand their uses outside? So for instance, a barber chair or a point-of-sale machine for carryout and not just outdoor dining. And this was, um, the response was that other communities, namely in my experience, Lake Orion and Birmingham and South Lyon are considering, um, the permit to also include those retail establishments so that they could have a point-of-sale machine outside as well.
What would you call a point-of-sale machine? What, what would that be?
It's, it's a, it would be like this kiosk right here maybe or something smaller that would have the, the credit card machine so that they could do the transactions outside if you were-
Oh, I see. So like a sidewalk sale?
No.
Uh, well, if, if you were picking up, um, curbside or something and they brought it out and you could pay out-
I think some of the bars on- Waitress goes and cashes you out and-
Yeah. I, I think some of the bars in downtown Plymouth are doing that already.
Yes.
So you're saying that, that other communities are moving out beyond restaurants to allow this? Is that what I understand?
Yes, some, some of these are like Lake Orion, um, Lyon, Birmingham.
I, I'm 100% in support of this. We might wanna come back then and take another look at doing something with regard to this, um, beyond restaurants and bars. So I'd like to get some more information about that from you for maybe a subsequent process. Because this is a great thing, I think.
In my experience, uh, they would be a separate resolution, very, very similar. Um, almost the same type of permit process. Um, but just allowing other businesses aside from restaurants to, to have a little bit of outdoor space if it's available.
We can look at that in the future, sure. I mean, right now, we need to really get the, this, this is where we've had the, the inquiries. Okay, any other questions?
Yes. A portion in the resolution where it says existence as of the date of this resolution, does that mean if somebody is new, they need to go through the process with the planning commission?
You wanna scroll down?
I say we delete that sentence. In existence as of the date of this resolution, if somebody opens a new business, they should be afforded the opportunity to have the red tape reduction also.
I can, I can see your point in that. I suppose it kinda depends on the, the type of use. Um, some, some things might trigger site plan consideration.
I, I guess Chuck, my only concern there is we don't know what the future holds and I, I don't necessarily want somebody to have some pop-up sidewalk, you know, um, eatery of some sort like on a, a cart or, or something. I've seen that with hot dogs and other things. I just don't know if we really wanna open the door to a, an establishment that we haven't fully vetted yet. I mean, these are people that we know. That's why we're doing this. That's why we're bypassing the planning commission process. Because these are people we know. We, we, we understand their, their, um, their track record and what, and what they're trying to do.
And they have an approved plan on file.
They had, they have an approved plan on file anyway. I just, I, it makes me nervous to think that we're gonna end up with somebody who's gonna have some off-the-wall parking lot, uh, you know, walk-up diner sort of thing, you know?
So if, if a prospective food establishment is right now in the process of trying to get approval from the planning commission, could they receive this same kind of approval through that process then?
I mean, I, I would say that we are definitely sensitive to, um, the, the needs of businesses. The only application I can think of that would be relevant is Phoenix Mill if they wanted to have some outdoor. Um, that's the only real commercial type establishment we have right now in the process.
But they won't be in operation by November 1?
I think they're a little far off, um, from that. But we would certainly work-
It's two sides of the coin. We're, we, we wanna be, we wanna expedite this for the people who are already in business and who have already been pre-approved. I don't want this to turn into a, a shortcut for, for a new establishment to bypass the traditional process.
Okay, I heard it. I agree. All right, not agree, but I-
Gary Heitman, do you have a question?
Oh, that's absolutely correct. This is for established businesses already in business in the township.
Okay. Anybody else?
Okay, what is the rental fees word in the last, what does that mean?
Is that in your permit, Laura, itself?
It says we'll waive all application fees, license and rental fees. Never heard of a rental fee paid to Plymouth Township.
It's in the, the bottom of the resolution of that first page. Um-
Last page of 41. Last sentence of page 41.
I would say in the planning department, we don't have rental fees. But in the building department, they may very well have those as part of some application.
Delete that word. We don't use rental fees.
It's just boilerplate, so that's all it is.
All right, next question. Number three of the application. Said, is it recommended that any fencing be aluminum, decorative in nature and no taller than four feet? You're not, most fencing is PVC that's temporary. It's lightweight, low cost. So they can use PVC, polyvinyl chloride?
This is, yes, just a recommendation that the building department would review.
All right, so they're not restricted to aluminum. That isn't the intent here.
Correct, it's just a recommendation based on what we've seen.
It's recommended that the fence be aluminum. We don't want, uh, chicken wire or, uh, you know, plastic, uh, that plastic stuff that they use, so.
Well, the plastic stuff is PVC.
Yeah, but I'm talking like the, the orange stuff that they would use at a construction site.
Oh.
I have a different idea, like a screen, so. Okay?
All right.
All right, I'm looking for a motion then.
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Clerk.
I move that the Plymouth Township Board of Trustees hereby adopt Resolution 2020-06-02-49, authorizing the implementation and use of the temporary outdoor seating permit. Such permit to automatically expire on November 1st, 2020 unless authorized, otherwise reauthorized by the board.
Motion's made by Clerk Vorva. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee, uh, by trustee Dempsey. Uh, Mr. Clerk, please take the role.
Excuse me. Treasurer, excuse me, Treasurer Clinton, yes. Trustee Kirmy.
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz.
Yes.
Clerk Vorva, yes. Trustee Dempsey.
Yes.
Trustee Heitman.
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Laura. We'll see you next week. Okay, at this point, I'd like to take a 10-minute recess to 9:30.
Good.
Turn your mics off, please. And if you're on the phone or if you're on Zoom paying along, we are gonna take a 10-minute break. So, uh, don't, don't go away. We'll be right back. Anyway, we gotta get back to work here. Okay, uh, we are back on at 9:30. I'm going to move up to the, uh, item E2. This is the authorization of construction of the sidewalk replacement program for 2020, based on what we've heard tonight and, uh, other information that we've received. Jeremy, what, what would be our, what is our recommended course of action for, for tonight? What do we need to do?
So at, at this point, you've heard all the public, uh, you know, hearing comments. At this, at this point, we're looking for an authorization to move forward and approve the finding and necessity for the number of sidewalk locations that we've identified throughout our, our program inspection.
Uh, it, it, would we also, at this meeting, identify the, the payment schedule? Or would that happen at a later meeting?
So the way I understand it is this authorizes the sidewalk construction to move forward. There'll be a separate letter from the treasurer's office that goes out to the residents explaining the payment schedule. But I don't, I mean, at this point, we could discuss that.
What I had-
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, what I had done previously with SADs is I did not send out a letter or a payment plan until the work was completed and basically they were getting an invoice. So we said, "Here's your amount that's due and here's your payment options." I apologize for screwing this up, um, because I had provided Jeremy with additional language that basically mimicked what we talked about with the, with the SADs. So, you know, in the resolution, you'll see here, they have three options. They can pay, uh, entire, you know, the entire bill upfront or they can spread it out over five years at prime plus two or they can spread it out over 10 years at prime plus four. My assumption was that this was, this was an SAD-type program. Well, with, conferring with, uh, Kevin Bennett afterwards, it's different. And we've got an ordinance and we've got precedent and we've got Michigan statute that says with sidewalk assessments, they can pay over five years. So I apologize for screwing up Jeremy and giving him language that wasn't valid.
So I, I have some thoughts when you're, when you're done with-
Yeah, sure, go ahead, Chuck.
As much as I hate this, uh, I have never, I hate to delay this, but I have never seen this much opposition to a sidewalk repair program. We started this about 25 years ago. Usually we'd have one or two people come in and that would be it. And what I think is, what we booted, lesson learned, is the timing for getting the job done and self, self-job or your own contractor, there's not enough time, especially with COVID. The payment method was confusing and the no marking was probably the biggest boot. We were over high-tech. Uh, and I know some people don't like it, uh, when they see an X on their sidewalk and it stays there for six months, but then it wears off. Um, I think with the amount of hardship that I heard here today, I think we gotta rewind and delay another year. I, I don't wanna go forward. I think that we're ramming this down their throat. They feel like, uh, they don't have enough time. In fact, with the economic conditions the way they are, it looks, some people might be able to beat the price or some people may do the work themselves. It's pretty easy to pour a sidewalk with ready-mix cement and some two-by-fours. But anyway, I'm, I'm leaning towards delaying it, but we delayed it already one year. But I see a lot of people suffering, unless they're not telling the truth, but I gotta take it for what they say, that they don't have an extra $1,000 laying around. And I know they would pay it off with no interest now we find out, which, that's a good thing.
Chuck, I, I agree. Um, I, I think the timing thing threw me for a little bit of a loop. By the time there was delays in mail and then us suggesting that they have to get the repairs done by July 3rd with no way they can hire a contractor in this environment, I, I think at a bare minimum, we would have to change the timeframe. I'm supportive of delaying this for a year because of a variety of other reasons. Um, one, one other thought and it's just, and I, and I haven't physically inspected these things. But as people were talking about their properties, I was bringing up the maps and looking, you know, actually on Google Maps and I was looking at their properties. And we had a lot of responses from these folks that they said, "I, I don't even know which slab you're talking about." Um, my, my, uh, going in position when we said we're only gonna do four and fives, I was, I was, for the most part, my thought was, "We're just gonna get the, the stuff that is really bad." But when you look at the things in the pictures, they didn't look that bad to me. So, um, I think I would like to see the next round of this, um, maybe a recalibration of what a four or a five is. Because a lot of people that responded by email or by phone mail, it didn't, couldn't, if I had a four or a five, I would walk out and my, go, "Oh geez, that one's broken, of course." But if people really couldn't identify what a four or a five is, uh, I think either, either they're messing with us or maybe we have to recalibrate what a four or a five is. Uh, Mr. Supervisor, I have to agree with the statements by, uh, both the treasurer and trustee Kirmy. Um, there, there was a delay in the mail. We've been having trouble with mail. I know the, the treasurer's been stating that the, the time to get out bills for taxes and for, and for, uh, water bills is taking longer, it's taking longer to get it. So we're having an issue with mail. Additionally, uh, I think we have to have a better idea of what a four or a five is. Because I think I agree with the treasurer that if you have a four or a five, you would say, "That's bad." And, and for 100 and some people to, to have called the, um, uh, the engineer to ask, gee, just exactly which one is it, is, is telling, I think. And so maybe we do need a calibration on that. But of course, you know, 300 and some people didn't complain. So maybe those were really bad, you know, fours or fives. So, so we have to assume that there was some good work done. But again, going back to the old tech of marking it, that may be the way. I know we're trying to do high-tech, trying to save, uh, time and, and money in the new high-tech way. But I, I think people are used to just seeing, "Well, there's the, there's the mark so I can tell you whether I agree with it or not." And we may have to go back to some, some old-tech system like that. So I'm in favor of moving this back for, uh, for another year myself.
Okay. Anybody else?
One thing is the accident-
Yeah, I, uh, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, Gary.
Gary, go.
Oh, I agree with, uh, most of what Mark and Chuck had said, except one thing. Uh, I talked to seven other people who called over and above everybody who were talking tonight. Everyone believes it's a good program. This was totally, totally a mess when, how this process was put together. And we did go high-tech. We never should have. Put the paint on the sidewalk and it made it easy. Everybody in the neighborhood knows which sidewalk slabs are gonna get replaced. And oh, by the way, give me more than a month to, uh, to figure out timing and, you know, uh, it, it was doomed right from the start as soon as we, uh, we started sending out dates that, that, you know, had a lot of people, we're hurting in, in, in a lot of areas here. We don't realize how bad some of these people, uh, lost their jobs and they're hurt, so.
I would agree with you as well, Gary, on that one. I, I wouldn't characterize this as a mess. I mean, I, I, it is, it, it's like, it's like trying to stop a battleship at a certain point. Because these, these, as you know, Gary, these, these projects are not put together in a matter of days or weeks. It takes months. And, and this project was plotted out really, you, you, we can go back two years ago. Um, if we go back to when we initiated this project, we're probably looking at, gosh, what do you think? January, February in terms of just getting the, getting the wheels in motion? And again, it's very difficult to, to slow down and even harder to stop that sort of thing. Bob, you had a question?
No, I'm just gonna echo-
Yeah. Jerry, uh, um, Jeremy and maybe Kevin Bennett, what happens to our relationship with the contractor? Are we going to get sued if we, if we delay this for a year? Do we have to stick with the same contractor? Do we have to rebid it? And I, I don't know if you don't know the answer tonight. I, I guess, I guess my number one question is, if we delay this for a year, uh, am, am I gonna get sued for breach of contract or something?
Has the contract been signed yet?
The contract has not been signed yet. Uh, the notice of award has gone out, but there's stipulations in the contract essentially allowing us to, uh, raise or lower the amount of sidewalk that we do in any given program. So we gave ourselves outs in the contract.
We could lower it to zero.
Yeah. We lowered it to zero.
Well, is this anything force majeure because of COVID?
I would need to see the contract itself before I could-
But, but we haven't signed the contract yet.
No, we haven't signed the contract yet. We have the contract books that are put together. We haven't received anything back from the contractor and then you, you obviously haven't signed it either.
Right. Uh, did we, did we execute a, was the intention for a multi-year contract for this service?
No, there was, the intention was we could potentially extend one if you wanted to go that route. That language is in the contract, but that's not, you're under no obligation to do that.
Would we have to rebid this if we delay a year? Would we have to rebid it, or could we still use these guys? But we don't know what the future holds. I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, that's a crap.
It's all going to depend on what the documents say.
You know, we, we, we had such high bids last year.
So directionally, it was great. We did the right thing.
We, we had really high bids last year. We had low bids this year. And it wasn't because of COVID. It was just, we got in at a good time, and now things are different.
We can extend the offer to them. We, I've done that in another township, extend the offer to keep your prices for the year. Because what we've been seeing lately is that contractor prices are going up 10% a year. I mean, the cost of concrete this year went up.
Can we try to, can you try to lock them in for another, for another year at the same rate?
Yeah, we can, we can certainly.
What they get out of it is they get the job, and we get the lower rate or the same rate.
Right.
I mean, that's a win-win.
If we do cancel this, we need to write a letter to all of these people that got the previous letter. And I'd like, please, to have the board review the letter ahead of time, fresh eyes. And it will give them the opportunity, if they want to be ambitious, they can fix it themselves between now and next year, or they can hire somebody, their brother-in-law, whatever. So they've got plenty of time, but we got to make it clear what we're doing and why, and that we listen to them, and whatever.
Okay. So.
To go to 50 houses, so.
No, Jeremy doesn't have to go to 50 houses. So I would entertain a motion. Let me, let me talk to the attorney again.
You don't have to make a motion, right? You just.
Do we motion to table this, or do we motion, do we have to do something affirmatively to stop it? We ignore it? Like it never happened? Motion to table?
Well, it's no action, but there's going to be some action. You're going to have to give some direct, we gave direction to the engineer.
Yeah.
We don't have to vote on that.
No, you don't. I mean, we're, that's.
That can be done administratively.
Yeah, we're doing that administratively. I mean, the, the thing is that there is a motion, there's a resolution before us. It's got a number and everything. We're going to have to renumber the last one that we did then. We'll worry about that later. But, I mean, so Kevin, I'm just looking at you. Is there any, I don't, any affirmative action that we have to take on this? Do we have to kill, do we have to kill it, or can we just let it lie?
You can just let it lie, as long as the resolution is not approved by a majority of the board, it is not in effect.
Can I have a, so can I have a motion to table it?
Mr. Supervisor, I move, I move that we table item resolution 2020-06-02-48.
Okay, motion's been made by.
Isn't the right word postpone? Table means you're going to do it in the same, you're going to take action at the same meeting. Postpone means.
Postpone.
Oblivion.
Yes. I agree.
Okay. You're going to change it to postpone?
I moved to postpone resolution 2020-06-02-48.
Very good. Second by trustee Kermy. All those in favor, we're not going to do a voice vote. We'll just do, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Okay. Okay, Mark Clinton, the floor is yours. We're going to talk about the Public Safety Millage Renewal Presentation and Discussion. This is the fire millage that is up for renewal on the November ballot. And Mark, take it away.
Thank you. I'll try to make this brief. This is really just intended to be informational, and in two weeks, I will put together a resolution and recommendation that we'll be voting on, I think, the last meeting in June. So Bob, if you can flip to the next slide to just cut to the chase, my recommendations will be that we ask for a millage renewal, and you can see I'm underlining renewal, that we'll get to in a minute, on the November 2020 ballot. I'm in agreement with Clerk Voor that we should always put things on the ballot where the majority of the voters have the opportunity to, to voice their opinion. You'll also see in a slide coming up, all of our other millages are now expiring in the year 2035. It would be my recommendation that we make this co-turn, co-turnamis, co-turnaminus, and have this expire, be a 15-year millage and expire in 2035 as well. So here's the current millages, and I think this is probably a valuable slide because it gives you a snapshot of what we have today. The very first line, and, and all of these line items are on your winter tax bills, if you study them in depth. The Charter Township Millage, every Charter Township gets a one mill. It's non-voted, it's given to you automatically. And you can see that over time, this one has been reduced by the Headley Act to about 2.8134. All the other ones, you can see, they all add up to 5.1884. We're still running extremely lean in this township. But you can see through this graph what the purpose of each millage is, the date of the election, the original millage, how it's been reduced by Headley, and then when it expires. So if you go to the next slide, Bob.
These Headley reductions are on the winter, the December 2019 bills, or this is the anticipated December 2020?
This is what was on the December.
2019.
Correct. Correct. So it, it's possible it will reduce further next December. So obviously, we've got this issue. We've got one of the millage lines that expires next year, tax year 2020. What that means is that, what that means is that the bills that I send out this year for the winter of 2020 will be the last ones that are here. After that, we have to either ask for a new millage, or let this one lapse, or ask for a renewal.
So that's the last, December 2020 bill is the last time you can collect that unless we have a millage.
Correct. I can send out one, one more bill in December of 2020. All right, Bob, the next slide. So the impact of that would be obviously significant. From the last millage that we had, this line item alone comprises 19% of our total tax revenue. So letting this lapse would be significant. Here's the bottom line, we need all of this money. We're running very lean, and each of these line items is important to the overall operation of the township. So letting this thing lapse and not either renewing it or asking for a new one is, in my opinion, a non-starter. Next slide, Bob? So there's a distinction, a very important distinction between a millage renewal and a new millage. A millage renewal picks up where the old millage left off. So as it continues to be reduced by the Headley Act, a renewal starts at the last year. So it will be the reduced amount. Where a new millage, you can, you can create any, any millage rate that you want. So it will continue, it'll just be a renewal and an extension. It'll continue to be impacted by the Headley Act, so.
So it'll be something like 0.99?
Correct. Yep. It does not go back to the original millage rate. You have to have the same stated purpose as with the previous ballot proposal. So I can't ask for a renewal for the money and then change my purpose for the millage. So it has to be the same language I was on the previous bill, previous ballot. Renewals are limited to 20 years, and they're subject to Headley rollbacks. Okay, next slide. So this is just what's, what's required in a millage proposal language. Every single millage proposal has to have these five elements. The rate, the estimated amount of revenue in the first year, the duration of the millage, a clear statement of the purpose of the millage, and a clear statement indicating whether the proposed millage is a renewal or a new millage. And then the next one. So this was the language that was on the May 2001 ballot. This was originally implemented in 1981, and then renewed in May of 2001. And now it's up for another renewal. You can't see it very well, but I've put some red highlighting in there because I think this is really the part that cannot change. Because the purpose of this says, and the funds thereby derived, be used for operating, maintaining, and obtaining real and personal property for fire services for the Charter Township of Plymouth. That's the one thing in here that cannot change. Everything else, my intent is to work with, with Kevin Bennett to come up with the final language that we're going to be voting on in the next two weeks. And the next slide. I think everybody knows this, but it's just a friendly reminder. If we, if we go ahead and put this on the November ballot, right, we can't, we can't use our public money, we can't use our public time to influence the outcome of this election in any way.
Does that mean it can't even be mentioned in the newsletter?
Well, number two, you can, you can use public money to maintain and circulate publication to distribute information, but not opinions. Yeah.
So to reiterate, you can inform, but you cannot advocate. We did that with the 2018 millage, and it's been done many times in the township for other, other millages.
And then, Bob, the, the next slide. So, next steps. Kevin, I'll work with you to finalize the proposed ballot language. And then I will present that to the board on June 23rd. And it has to be in the hands of Wayne County no later than August 11th. That's the deadline for submission to Wayne County to get it on the November ballot. Short and sweet. Any, any questions, thoughts, comments?
So Mark, even though we could go 20 years with this, your recommendation is 15 so that all of these public safety millages will all end in the year 2035?
That's my recommendation. That's my opinion.
That is, I'm nervous as hell about that. That's like shooting your, the whole gambling wad at once. What happens if there's some weird thing that goes on?
I'll be dead.
Exactly, like a man. We've never had these things all expiring at the same time. I think we should do it for 20 years, or do it for 15, whatever we think we need, but.
Well.
I'll be 69, okay, so.
You'll still be alive. I'll be dead.
No, but it, it, I get it. It's still important, right? It's important to think in the long term. And I think in many situations, we don't think about the long term. There's a lot of things that can take place in the next 15 years. We could completely wipe out all of these and go to an SAD, or we could come up with a new millage. The reason I like the, the option of the co-turnaminus is even if we did this for 20 years, in 15 years, we would still have to go back and ask for a, a new millage.
Why? If it expires in 20 years? I'm confused.
Right, because we're. The other three are expiring.
Oh, the other three, yeah.
The other three are expiring. So you're saying, well, if all hell breaks loose, if they don't approve the renewal or of those three millages, all hell is going to break loose anyhow because we're only working on 19% of our tax revenue.
I don't know, it just, we've never done that. We've staggered them all the time, they've been easier to, to pass.
Well, they've, there's only been two staggers.
Pardon?
It's only been staggered with two. The, the, the first one, the fire, and then the next two, police and fire, police and fire, those are the only two that have been staggered. The fourth one is brand new, and I made that co-turnaminus.
Well, we designed the November 2018 to be 2035 also.
Yeah, exactly.
The November 2018 millage, though, does that, is that really necessary in the year 2035? Would that, could that theoretically go away?
If you have a crystal ball.
Okay. I don't.
So, so my answer in my crystal ball is yes, because when we projected all of the OPEB and all of the pension, and if you recall my beautiful graphs that show what's going to take place, all of these things peak in the year 2035. Our OPEB liability peaks in the year 2035. So does it go away after 2035? No, but it starts going down, just like the coronavirus. We're going to flatten the curve after 2035.
Well, the other, the police and fire pensions after 2027 goes to zero.
That's, that's true.
So we may not need as big a millage. The November 18 millage, the 1.2, may not be as big in 2035. Who knows?
We, we always have the option. You know, these, these millages are a maximum allowed. We always have the option to vote as a board. We won't assess the entire millage. And like I said, I don't know what's going to happen by the year 2035.
Although government traditionally always lubbies the max. I have never seen one that says, oh, we're going to roll it back.
Okay, so your recommendation, Mark, is that this would be a 15-year millage?
It's my recommendation. I'm not married to it. I'm open to other thoughts, other suggestions. Thank you.
Gary Heitman, any comments?
No, it's beautiful job, very, very, very good job, Mark. Thank you.
Okay, so we know the timeline on this. We'll be, when we meet on the 23rd, the ballot language will all be ready, and then Jerry will send that off to the county clerk. It'll be on the November ballot.
So that will give you a chance, if it's defeated in November, you'll have, you'd have to have a special election in 2021.
That is correct. And we want to avoid having an election like that in an off year. You want to be in a general election so that the majority of people can, can give their thoughts on it. And I, I know it's an election year, but still, that's the right thing to do, is to put it out there in front where people, the majority of the people are going to be voting.
All righty then. Anybody else? Okay, then we know the timeframe, and we'll be back on this issue on the 23rd. There's no other action that needs to be taken. So we're going to move on to item F. This is supervisor and trustee comments. I want to thank everybody who appeared tonight, who called in, who came in via Skype, who came in via their, their laptops, for their patience and their understanding. This is unprecedented. We have never had to hold a public hearing like this under these conditions and under the restraints that we've, that have been imposed upon us. At the same time, we take an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States and the state of Michigan. We take that very seriously. Part of our job is to make sure that you have due process, that you have a First Amendment right to petition your government for a redress of grievances, that you have a right to be heard, and that, and that there is due process whenever we are trying to assess your property, whether it's for a street, a sidewalk, or a millage, or anything of that nature. This has been very awkward, but we got through it. We got through it in about, what, two hours? But I think that's pretty good. And we got a lot of input, and we acted on that input. So I don't know what's out there right now in social media. I don't know if people are critical of what we've done, or if they're taking credit for some, one thing or another, or if they feel like they could do a better job. If you think you could do a better job, I'd be, I'm all ears. I'd love to find out how we could have done it better. But we got through it. We got through it as a team, and, and God willing, we are not going to have to keep doing this in the weeks and months ahead. We'd all love to go back to a normal meeting format where we can all sit here at the same table, and we can see all of you, and we can talk to you one-on-one, and we can have you come up here and comment on, on all the issues that we normally, that we normally confront. So again, I want to thank everybody for your patience, for your understanding. We are, sometimes we have to make this up as we go along, the processes and procedures. But at all times, our foremost goal is to make sure that your voice is heard pursuant to the, to the God-given rights that we have sworn an oath to uphold. And that's, that's my speech for tonight. Jerry?
Here, here, I, I echo that, and thank you very much.
Bob?
Nothing here.
Jack?
What's been going on in the country? And I'm just going to quote from a communication I got today, because I think this selected reading is so apropos. So this is, these are not my words, but I think they're really excellent. Each of us in our own communities, businesses, and institutions at all levels must commit to do all we can to create constructive spaces where justice and peace can flourish, including in those places that reflect our history as Americans. If we are successful, we will find our way to a more unified society where out. If we are successful, we will find our way to a more unified society, where outbreaks of pain and outrage will become only a thing of the past." I think that was really well-written, and I.
Thank you.
I echo those comments.
Who wrote that, Jack?
It was in an email from Paul Edmondson, who is the head of the National Trust for Historic Preservation.
Very good. Amen. Chuck?
Is the next meeting June 9th? And what's the format?
Yeah, June 9th, we will be back here. It will be the same format, as far as our structure here. We will have on the agenda the audit presentation from Plant Moran. Plant Moran's corporate orders are that they are still to work remotely. So Martin Olesznik and his team will be presenting via a.
Zoom?
A Zoom hookup. But we're going to, we're working to bring him through the projector here, so that we can see him on the big board.
Do you want to do a regular Zoom meeting for the entire township? And they just, in other words, the invitation goes out, they participate, and then that way, other people who aren't coming.
Yeah.
Can, I'm talking about Zoom like we did that one time.
Yeah, I know, but.
A real Zoom, because the echo, like these, I mean, it's difficult for these people to hear the way we do this now, if you are on the phone line.
Well, we've tested this, we tested out every Tuesday. It worked pretty, I think it worked pretty well tonight. I think everybody was able to hear us who was online. I mean, I didn't have, it doesn't bother me.
So why do we want to do a regular old Zoom like Corporate America does?
Because we also have on the agenda, we're going to have the discussion about the Gulf View Park, which is very visually intensive. It's, you want to ask questions. It's interactive.
Right, but you can do that here locally.
Yeah.
But.
And we have other items on that agenda. We've got some easements. We've got, I think, a couple other minor issues from the building department, permits, et cetera.
All right, so they're going to be coming in on the screen and using some type of connection from Plant Moran.
Right.
I think, why wouldn't we have them on a Zoom, and then we join that meeting from this room? Isn't that what we're going to do? Yeah. Yeah, we'll join from this laptop, so. And he'll be joined by video, so he can screen share.
Yes.
Because I'll be joining.
Right there.
Right. And so if he screen shares, it'll show on the.
So it's a real Zoom, like what I'm asking?
Yeah.
Okay.
Their recommendation was to use Microsoft Teams.
Teams?
Yeah, because he was just going to send us a link, and we click, and.
It doesn't matter to me.
We were going to test that out, but either.
We have no experience with that, so.
Yeah, I mean, Teams works great.
But he's comfortable with Zoom. I don't think he's going to have a problem with that.
Sorry, say that again?
I said, I don't think Martin has a problem, whatever platform we want to use, whatever system we want to use.
But he prefers Team? Or Teams?
Yeah.
That's their internal video conference.
Yeah, they already have that software on their laptop, right?
It's part of Office 0365. Don't we have Teams as part of our license, or no?
Well, you guys are still working that out. We've been working on it for the last couple days. So we'll keep, we'll come up with the system that works best. And then when they're done, and they're going to be the bulk of the meeting, when they're done, then we'll have the discussion about the park thing. We're not going to, well, I am looking for direction on that. And then we've got some minor easement right-of-way issues for some current projects that are underway that are coming from the building department. Nothing severe. Okay, all set, Chuck?
Yeah.
Mark?
All set here.
Did I get Gary Heitman? Gary?
No.
I got you, right?
Yeah, oh, I can hear you. Everything's just fine, though you didn't get me yet. But, yeah, I could hear the, I could hear the whole meeting. It was very, very good. It was a little, you know, people that spoke softly were kind of hard to hear. Again, I apologize for not being there in person tonight. I hurt my back and having a hard time getting around. But I would like to say, any candidates running for the township office that complain about this meeting format and what we have to go through to jump through hoops for our governor, you know, I'm sorry, but you don't get my support. And we're already seeing that on social media. And I hate to say that. Thank you.
We're all set. We went around the horn. We're all good? Okay, yep. Public comments and questions? We got one member of the public. You're good. You're all set. Anybody, oh, yeah. How soon I forget. Is there anybody, Mr. Jenks, still on the phone? No hands, no numbers, no digits, nothing. Okay.